Praise the Lord. Good evening, everyone. Stand for invocation by Mr. Deemer. For all about a pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Deemer. Dear Lord, we humbly come before you tonight as your servants and your children. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your love. We confess the things that we've done wrong, Lord, and the sins that we've committed. We ask you to bless our land and to bless our city. Lord, we love our city. We love its beautiful views of the mountains and its beautiful views of the river that flows through them. We thank you most of all for the people of Lynchburg and how important they are. Lord, bless our decisions as we attempt to represent them and to use the authority they loan to us correctly. We pray all these things in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America, consider republic of gracious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Deemer, tonight is the topic divided into two sections, the general business and public comment. However, there is the matter of the real estate tax that we all discussed during work session, and I'm just looking for direction from council from where to put that in the meeting.
You can move to the forefront.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda in the public comment section to allow anybody who is here tonight that was present last night and denied an opportunity to speak before council to get their three minutes to speak before council.
Thank you.
Approved.
We'll have to vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
You want to vote on it? Any discussion? Any discussion on that? Yes.
I would say-
Mr. Frawley.
I would say if anyone wants to speak about items before council, that they should sign up as we normally do. The public hearing and item that was before us last night failed, and it's no longer before us. So we'd be talking about things in the past where we need to be working on things over the next week. I'll be voting no.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes, I also vote no, because the citizens have been given several opportunities to talk about the budget, and the item that we were going to discuss yesterday has been removed. Thank you.
Mr. Deemer?
I would agree. In the interest of time, we have a full agenda tonight and have a lot to go over, and I think we need to go ahead and get that done. So I would ask that we stick to what we have to go over tonight on this agenda.
Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last night was actually a really beautiful night. We ended up having prayer in city council chambers and praying for our city. But what was frustrating to me is that it was probably about eight hours of voicemail messages, and a number of citizens were denied the opportunity to speak in a public hearing format. And that's our responsibility. You know, we asked for this position. We asked you all for this position, and we're going to disagree on various issues, but something that absolutely is our job is to listen. And even listen with those with whom we disagree, and to protect the rights of those whom disagree with us, to speak to us and share that point of disagreement. That's how we grow as a city. And I feel it was incredibly wrong and an absolute disservice to this community that that opportunity was denied when so many individuals made the effort. Even though the motion was withdrawn, it shut down public dialogue and understanding around so many elements in this budget process that have been incredibly confusing. When you shift money that covers up spending increases, there needs to be a discussion around that, and we've seen a number of iterations of that in this budget cycle. And there needs to be public dialogue around it, and shutting that down, I've said a number of times, but I believe was grossly inappropriate. And it doesn't repair the wrong by opening up tonight, because there were hours of what we should have listened to and included in our deliberations tonight that will not be a part of that now. So yes, I do support opening up the floor for those who were present last night and didn't have the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the one thing that we have to make time for is listening to all of you. That's why we're here, to hear from you, and then to weigh in and do the business that you sent us here to do. Never seen anything like what happened last night. And I'm not picking. I'm just going to get a little technical, but there was no withdrawn motion, because there was never a motion.
Correct.
And, you know, it's, we didn't even adjourn the meeting. Right? So the other part that you missed about it, because they didn't put the cameras on, is before our work session, there was a motion to equalize the tax rate, and I seconded that motion, because that was an item of business on the agenda for last night. And the meeting was never adjourned. There was no vote. We are required by our rules of procedure and Virginia Code to vote. We have a duty to vote. There was a motion to adjourn, a second to that, and then the gavel was hit and four people left. Looking at videos from the Juneteenth celebration?
Yes.
Sounds like it was a good time.
We were excited.
Awesome. Fantastic. Thanks for sharing that, Sterling.
It was my role quiet.
Thank you. And, you know, I think it was just so unfortunate to see how that happened. Motion, second, gavel down, no vote, four people leave, and the meeting didn't even end. We actually ended the meeting before the work session today. Just never seen anything like that. And it was clear that there were a lot of people that were very upset about not having an opportunity to address this body. And if there's anybody here that was here last night that wants that opportunity, I think that's our number one priority, is to hear from all of you. We need to honor that commitment, and we need to hear from any of you that want to speak.
Mr. Frawley?
So I, I, um, what was not shared was that council concluded that the motion on equalization was out of order, because if council was indeed at recess, which is what is being opined by my esteemed colleague, then the only motion that could be considered at that time was the one pending, which was adjournment. So we decided, fine, just to be safe, we'll adjourn. So we adjourned the meeting. But that was left out. And while we're talking about last night, city staff, I'm submitting a FOIA request for the meeting, the minutes of the meeting of city council, the official meeting of city council, that happened after last night we went into recess. I want the minutes. I want the minutes, because notwithstanding our rules of procedure and irrespective of their intent or what actually happened last night, the law is even more clear and causes me in deep concern. What concerns me here is that the subsequent, to this breakdown, council members Missions, Deemer, and Timmer reportedly met separately in this very chamber to discuss city business. According to Section 2.2-3701 of the Code of Virginia, a meeting is defined as an assembly of three or more members of the public body where public business is transacted or discussed, whether formally or informally. Virginia FOIA also mandates that such meetings must be open to the public and given proper notice with meetings recorded. Worse, our friends in the media have already reported that these three colleagues of mine cited their gathering as an unofficial meeting to social media and conducted business and discussion of public matters without notice nor minutes recorded. Moreover, they did not adjourn, recess, or take steps to obtain a quorum, which are the only explicit items in our rules of procedure that they are allowed to do. They are not allowed to facilitate any discussion of public business. That is Virginia law. Conducting business in this manner that blatantly and intentionally violates Virginia Freedom of Information Act, even after the city attorney had advised just a week ago of these facts. Whether or not a quorum was intact, or if the council was or continues to be in a state of recess, is immaterial to this issue. And a meeting of these three members to discuss council matters without public notice or minutes would constitute a clear violation of the Freedom of Information Act and be a Class 1 misdemeanor. So no, I am not voting on anything related to last night, because y'all want to put into the record something into these minutes that y'all meant. That's the true intent here. You don't want to hear these folks. You want to protect your asses.
Point of order.
No.
Point of order. Point of order. He will not speak like that in these chambers, Mr. Mayor.
I'll speak how I like, sir.
We have rules.
Okay. Everybody calm down.
Why don't you just let us speak instead for crying out loud? We're the freaking taxpaying citizens.
Mr. Deemer?
You might want to hear from us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that kind of does come to the crux of the matter. There is no, uh, there's no point where listening to the public is not important. And that statement was made that there wasn't any importance to us listening. We listened. It's not an official meeting. I mean, we were technically in a meeting. We decided that today. The meeting continued all night and was finally adjourned today because nobody ever voted for adjourned. But we didn't conduct any business. We didn't do anything of any official. You know what we did? We listened. We listened to the citizens, and it was a really good meeting, and I'm really glad we did it. It was beautiful. We prayed for our city right here, and that's exactly what needs to happen. And I hope that it happens more. But no, we were not conducting city business. We were not voting on city business. There was no official actions taken, and of course, there's no minutes, because staff shut down the cameras. Staff abandoned their posts, even though we hadn't adjourned. Everybody left. And for those who left, I only have one word: shame on you. Okay, that's three words. Shame. Shame. Because that's our number one job, Mr. Mayor, is to listen. And so many voicemails, and so many people, and yes, we stayed, and we did listen, and I'm proud that we listened, and I would do it again, under threat of misdemeanor. You know what was lost last night, potentially? Our liberties. The First Amendment, the ability to speak, was stolen from people. The ability to gather together, to assemble, Fourteenth Amendment, the ability to redress your government. These are liberties that were hard fought for and won, and they don't come from government. We don't give those liberties to you. And when we shut down this meeting, that liberty isn't taken away, but we were borderline. We were in gray area. That was a public meeting. We advertised it. People showed up. People took time out. People took off work. People changed their schedules. People got babysitters. People paid babysitters. People came out, and they only wanted to be heard. And I will do it exactly the same way again, and I don't care about misdemeanors on that. I will take that. What I'm not going to do is take away the liberty of Lynchburg citizens and break some of their constitutional, God-given liberties. There's a higher law involved here, and that's the law I'm more concerned with.
Thank you.
Mr. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that I really respect about you is that you're a man who always looks for peace. And I believe, and I'm making some assumptions, that last night, your efforts were to bring about peace. But what I see as a trend on this council is that when speech is suppressed and when dialogue is suppressed, whether through the nature of a quorum or through closed meetings and manipulations of rules, that it creates more chaos. Examples of that being, and I've used this example before, there's a public accusation, and then the desire is to go into a closed session to discuss, where you are not legally allowed to disclose what happens in that session. So there's a public accusation, but then there's no ability for public response. There's efforts for dialogue and claims for a desire for conversation, and then there's no quorum. There's this pattern that is beginning to emerge, that I believe has actually been present with this council sadly for about the past two and a half, three years, where dialogue is being suppressed in the name of transparency. I mean, shoot, some of the conversations that take place with attorney-client privilege, I have no idea why there's privilege stamped on those emails. I have no idea. But now I can't talk about it, and I can't talk about the contents of it, because then there's the possibility with this council for a censure. And so it closes the ability for us to discuss the underlying issues, and it suppresses the minority voice on council, whether it's that side of the dais or this side of the dais, depending on how you apply it. And that's why I've consistently opposed the closed session. That's what I believe we saw last night, an effort for peace, an effort to bring a sense of tranquility and move on, but really, it failed to recognize the fundamentality of what free speech does in our society and the necessity of it in the nature of our rules. It's significant, and it's what allows us to grow as a community, because we can have open disagreement, and then we can move to a place of resolution. But when we shut each other down, that's where this chaos happens back and forth. That's what has to stop. We've got to open up the dialogue. And I talk about the rules a lot. It's coming in my rules, you know that, but I believe that last night was the epitome of that. And I, this is not an "I told you so." We talk about it all the time. But it's why I've been saying, the blind sides, the lack of communication, that's where the chaos comes from. And we've got to bring this out into the public, as messy as it is, and open up the ability to have these conversations and do it in a way where the rules are equally applied, where we remove some of the vagueness that creates the arbitrary application based on the immediate circumstance and tenor of the room, and actually creates consistency in the leadership that we provide to this city. We owe this city that. We owe this city that vision, and I believe we can do it, because I know the talent that is at this dais. There is talent at this dais, and if we do that, we can thrive as a city. But I believe that we should offer the ability to speak tonight.
Ms. Ray?
So again, we have a very lengthy agenda to get to, and while I appreciate the comments shared tonight, and just for clarification for our citizens, the purpose of the public hearing last night was for two things, was we had a requirement and obligation to have a public hearing for the consideration of both taxes that were being considered in Mr. Frawley's car tax relief proposal. In order to lower the car tax or do car tax relief, it was requiring an increase in the real estate tax. In any increase in the tax, we were required by law to have a public hearing, and that was first on the agenda, and then second on the agenda was the car tax relief. That had to be announced, and so a public hearing has to happen, so the public can come, and so we understood that you were coming to give your opinions. That was fully, you know, known to all of us. Had lots of emails. We knew that there was voicemails coming in, that y'all had all taken your time to give your opinion and made arrangements to get here. That was not lost on any of us up here. Mr. Frawley shared last night that he knew before the meeting that he did not have the votes for the proposal to pass. Now, the mayor could have canceled the meeting. He could have given y'all forewarning yesterday, and you not shown up. He chose not to do that and allowed the meeting to at least get gabbled in, and then Mr. Frawley decided to adjourn. I supported that, and the reason why was because, and again, whether you like it or not, was to give y'all your night back, because there was not going to be a vote that was going to pass. All of your concerns about the real estate tax being increased wasn't going to happen. So we heard you. We heard from you. We got your emails. We saw all the comments online. So all of you that had the concern that that was going to happen, it wasn't going to happen. So the thought process of you being concerned that that was going to happen, it wasn't going to happen. Mr. Frawley said, "It's not going to pass." So from the thought, from that standpoint, we were trying to save y'all seven or eight hours of your night and saying, "You don't have to sit here. You can go back home." We knew there were a lot of voicemails. It was not to be disrespectful of the time that you took or the people that had made the time to call, whether you believe it or not. That was at least my thought behind it. I believe that was what Mr. Frawley was trying to do, was just say, "Hey." So it was about what was on the table in the proposal. It was not to silence anybody. We have been talking about the budget since March. Many of you have been coming to the podium to tell us about supporting equalization, supporting taxes. We've heard from many, many citizens for the last few months about where you stand on taxes. We've gotten many emails. So the public hearing was not the first opportunity that our citizens have had to tell us your opinion on this budget. We have been talking about it for a long time. So to make it sound like this was the first time that you've had to tell us your thoughts, it's just not factual. This was just a public hearing on this specific proposal that Mr. Frawley had. So I just want to get that out there, and the standpoint, at least I was taking on not making y'all have to be here last night, if we knew that that vote was not going to take place because it was going to fail, knowing that tonight, we're again going to be here to discuss the tax rate. We had a work session earlier today, where if y'all were watching or we were present, we talked through the tax rate, and nothing was going to be visually shown last night. So today, on our work session, you saw three tax rates proposed, or at least recommended, not even recommended. They were shown with what would happen to, at each level, and you got to see that. That was not going to happen last night. If any tax rate had been recommended or proposed last night, the staff was not going to be able to give a presentation. So none of you will have been able to see anything on the screen about the effects of any of those rates, because no presentation was prepared to be given. No questions between us. There would have been no [inaudible]. There would have been no dialogue, which would have been unfair to any of you to know how those rates would have impacted any of you. That would not have happened last night. So that's another reason that it would have been better to just not have the meeting and allow y'all to have what happened today at our work session and what's going to happen tonight, so that we can have the exchange with our staff. We can have discussion, which is not the intent of a public hearing. It's only for you to come to the podium and share your feelings, which is important. But we would never have been able to discuss back with you anything. That is what tonight is for. For us to have the budget discussion in front of you and show you what's going to happen at any rate. That was what I wanted you to be able to see. That was my personal desire for you. And I think it's important that you see, before we vote, what exactly happens at every rate. So I just needed you to understand that and perspective, because a lot was missed last night. And we could not share all that I just shared with you when he made the motion to adjourn, because a motion to adjourn is a non-debatable motion parliamentary-wise. We cannot discuss it, debate it. It's just a motion, you second, and you vote. Or, but I do want to make a comment. Right after Mr. Feraldi motioned, I seconded. The mayor motioned to adjourn, or adjourned the meeting. We got up. He attempted to talk to Mr. Missions. If you go back and watch, or if you were here, because I don't know when the tape went off. Mr. Missions said to the mayor, "You just adjourned the meeting. You're not the presiding officer of this meeting anymore." So through that comment, that was an acknowledgement that the meeting did adjourn. If you say to the presiding officer, "You just adjourned the meeting. You're no longer in charge." You're acknowledging that the meeting adjourned. I need everybody to note that. Because if you're saying today now that the meeting was not adjourned, that it was at recess or whatever you want to call, and you forced us to then vote at work session, then why did you say out loud to the mayor, "It was adjourned"? Either it was adjourned or it was not. So we can't say one thing, say another thing, and mislead people. So Mayor, I'm asking you to please call the vote, so we can get on to the business of the city tonight and discuss the budget and get moving. I'm asking you to call the vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Missions, quickly.
Thank you. First point I'm going to make. Section 2-5, cancellation or rescheduling of meetings. This is in our Rules of Procedure. A regular meeting may be canceled or rescheduled. Regular, not special. Yesterday was a special call meeting. "In special circumstances and for the convenience of the council, if the change would not impact an advertised public hearing or a scheduled public presentation, the mayor and vice mayor shall agree to any such change, and the council member shall be immediately notified of the change and the reason therefore. If any council member objects, the regularly scheduled meeting shall proceed as originally planned. In the event that no council member objects, the public and the media shall be notified promptly." So I'm just going to point that out for a couple of reasons. One is because regularly scheduled meetings have been canceled since I've been on city council at the behest of a tyrannical mayor. Right? That doesn't read the Rules of Procedure and doesn't understand that if a single council member objects or if the vice mayor does not agree, that they can't cancel meetings. They can't do that. It's in our Rules of Procedure. But it happens, among other things. There's no provision in here that allows for a special meeting to be canceled, and it explicitly carves out public hearings and says that they can't if it would not impact an advertised public hearing or a scheduled public presentation. So the claim was just made that the mayor could have canceled the meeting, but he chose to show up and gavel in instead. Well, the mayor couldn't cancel the meeting on their own. You know. But that's not the issue here. The issue is that we want to hear from you. And just never forget that there's three people that sat up here to hear from you, and there's four that left and walked out. And that's what you need to remember. That's what you need to remember. And that commitment will never change. Doesn't matter what they say to me. Doesn't matter what they say about me. I want to hear from you.
Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an email that I'll be sending later tonight, and I just want to read it into the record. It is predominantly addressed to Mr. Friedman regarding the Rules of Procedure and the nature of what happened last night.
No, that's personnel.
This is completely relevant, and this has to do with the legality of what happened last night in our Rules of Procedure. Yes.
It might be worth...
I would not violate her First Amendment rights right now, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not.
You absolutely are, if you don't let her speak.
Mayor, if I could, so if it's addressed to me, you know, certainly council needs to understand it could have elements of attorney-client privilege.
Exactly.
She's not an attorney.
He's in point.
I don't know what the communication says. So I guess I just put that out there, that it won't have confidentiality.
Yeah, I'm the client, and I waive that privilege. Thank you.
You can't do that.
Yeah, I can.
He can't invoke it.
He can't invoke attorney-client privilege. I am the one who is...
You're the client.
I am the client. And I am, and this goes to my point earlier, Mr. Feraldi.
Read the email.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Friedman, and members of council, and now members of the public. I need to state several concerns regarding how rules providing for transparency, accountability, open meetings, and recorded votes were not followed in ending the public meeting on June 23, 2025, regarding the real estate property tax proposal initiated by Councilmember Feraldi and set for public hearing by city staff based on an informal consensus without a vote. At the beginning of the meeting... Sorry, people are texting me while I'm trying to read this. "At the beginning of the public meeting, Mr. Feraldi made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Reed, while a substantive matter was on the table for consideration. The mayor then adjourned the meeting without taking any form of vote, much less a recorded vote. This action presented three concerns regarding the violation of our rules, which in turn raised questions about the violation of other rules. One, our rules are clear that a motion to adjourn requires a recorded vote. Section 6-7B provides section..." And I'm going to quote it. "...in addition to substantive proposals, only the following procedural motions, and no others, are in order. Unless otherwise noted, each motion requires the floor and a second, is debatable, may be amended, requires a majority of the votes cast, and a quorum being presented for adoption. Procedural motions are listed below in the order of priority. If a procedural option is not listed below, then it is not available." And my emphasis is added in that. I know I'm doing a lot of legal jargon, but I appreciate you all bearing with me as this is read into the record, because it is important. "The actions yesterday violated this rule, as there was not a casting of votes. Two, our rules promote full discussion and debate by prohibiting a motion to adjourn while there is a matter on the table. This rule is especially significant in the context of a motion to adjourn, which is not debatable. Allowing a motion to adjourn to take place and carried without a vote allows minority of persons to cut short a matter of public significance that is being considered. To prevent such conduct..." Section 6-7B.2 of the rules reads, "At the meeting of the council, a motion to adjourn shall always be in order. The motion may be made only at the conclusion of action in the pending substantive matter. It is not, it may not interrupt deliberation of a pending matter." And I'm going to repeat that. "It may not interrupt deliberation of a pending matter. The motion is not debatable and cannot be amended." Ms. Reed spoke to that earlier. "In your email response regarding these matters, you state this interpretation is correct." And this is a quote from Mr. Friedman. "Correct typically with a motion validly on the table for consideration. There is a requirement for a recorded vote." So yes, this is typically the case. "Yet the word 'typically,' which implies an exception to the recorded vote rule, is not in our rules. Nor is there an exception to the recorded vote rule. The rules of statutory or rule construction do not permit you to alter the reading of the rule to alter the clear wording and the purpose of the rule," as explained later in this email. "Not only do city council rules require a majority vote for the motion to be adopted, the rules also provide an affirmative duty of each council member to vote in order to ensure accountability to the public." We actually have a rule that requires us to vote. So that was editorializing of my own email. "Section 6-9, duty to vote. Each council member who is present at the meeting shall be required to vote upon all issues presented for decision, unless prohibited from doing so by the Virginia Conflict of Interest Act or unless excused from voting by the other members of council." This appears to be another violation of the rules that occurred yesterday. I'm drawing to a conclusion, and I have a point. Moreover, Section 6-10 regarding the method of voting requires, under subsection C, that an affirmative vote by a majority of council present is necessary to adopt a motion, and that all questions submitted to the council for decision shall be decided by a vote of the council utilizing the electronic voting board. This also was not done, as there has not been a vote. You also state in the email, "Further, given the intent of the motion was to conclude the matter on the agenda, I don't think it necessarily needs to appear on the future meeting for discussion." Again, you imply there is an exception to the rule regarding a pending matter appearing on the agenda in the future meeting. What is the exception to the rule of which you are relying? And I will yield for an answer in a moment, but I am going to finish this briefly. In summary, your, or Mr. Friedman's interpretations of the rules designed to ensure public... The rules which are designed to ensure public debate, recorded votes, public hearings, and to, as stated in our rules, which expressly state that council's actions should be the result of a decision on the merits and not the manipulation of these procedural rules, and that each item presented for consideration is entitled to a full and free discussion and... You may go ahead, Mr. Feraldi. I'll yield for a moment, but I'm going to retain the floor.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, cool. "And interpreted those rules to allow for a matter that was not voted on to be adopted, shortchanging public discussion while preventing a recorded vote. This violates the rules of mischief of statutory construction, recognizing by the Commonwealth of Virginia, since its founding and adopted by the Virginia Supreme Court. As stated by the Virginia Supreme Court in 1990 in the case of University of Virginia v. Harris..." And I've got the citation here. "...previously, the court reiterated and reaffirmed the 400-year-old mischief rule of statutory construction." And just to summarize with the mischief rule, every statute should be read as to promote the ability of the enactment to remedy the mischief at which it is directed. All other rules of construction are subservient to that purpose. Interpreting our rules to defeat the purpose of transparency, openness, and free discussion and debate and accountability violate this rule." And so I'm asking for Mr. Friedman's response. I also ask that he does not routinely add the disclaimer, add his routine disclaimer that essentially says that his response is attorney-client privilege. I do still have the floor, and I know that I am taking a moment to read this. But this is significant, Mr. Mayor. We can say that rules and technicalities don't matter, but ultimately, it's what's creating the chaos that everyone's upset about. And I'm upset about it, too. When we do not have consistency in the way that we govern ourselves and the transparency and accountability about that to the people, we can't function as a body. And we are seeing the consistent misapplication and misappropriation of these rules in a way that benefits some and others. And the scales change, right? But it's not consistent across the board. I have a couple additional notes in this email. I am going to send it. The public is welcome to it. The media is welcome to it. This is what's wrong with your council. This is what's wrong. We are not consistent in how we govern ourselves and our self-accountability with our Rules of Procedure and these key elements of transparency. We fix that, this will change. Because we have talent at this dais. We have knowledge at this dais. And we have people that care about this city at this dais. And it can happen, but... I was about to use a cuss word, and I had to stop myself. I cuss when I get excited. We can do this. And you all, I am inviting you all. I am asking you all. You have asked for council chaos to stop. I'm asking you all to hold us accountable to our rules, to hold us accountable to transparency, to hold us accountable to dialogue, because that's what's going to shift this thing. That's what's going to shift this thing. And that email will absolutely be made public. Mr. Friedman, I look forward to your response. But I believe that last night was an egregious misinterpretation of our rules. I believe the email that we received represents that, because it contradicts itself. So you're welcome to speak to it, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mayor, well, I need to address this. I need to address it. So I think there's a gross misunderstanding of what the city attorney's role is and who is the client. Okay? So the entity, the city municipal corporation, is the client. Everyone in the city entity is part of the client. The only individual, or called an individual, that can waive the privilege, especially when communicated to the majority of council, is a majority of council. Individual council members cannot waive attorney-client privilege for their own benefit, for public transparency, whatever it may be. It is protected by the body for the benefit of the entity. So any advice I give, confidential communications I give in relation to public business, that is protected. So in relation to the response in connection as to why it was adjourned, it wasn't a deviation from the rules. Everyone on this dais, and when I say everyone, I mean a majority, understood that the meeting had adjourned. And they left, leaving without a quorum. No public business could be handled. All city staff had left. I had hung around to see if a quorum would have reconvened, and they didn't. And so I departed. So, you know, certainly, I understand the misunderstanding with the privilege and who I represent. But, you know, that is my two cents on it. You know, as far as the adjournment, I do think the mayor had validly adjourned it. The Rules of Procedure are for council's convenience. They're for council's convenience. They're for efficiency. If a majority of city council did not want to address a 1.025 tax rate, I think it has the right to do that and to adjourn. And that's what I'd offer.
Mayor, please.
Yes. First, I would like to say something. What happened yesterday, I accept full responsibility. I accept full responsibility for it. I made the call. I adjourned the meeting, and I accept full responsibility. And may we vote on the item that's on the table?
The motion that I have is to add, citizens who are here for the June 23 public hearing, assuming at the end of public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then I have you making the motion, and I do have a tie between Councilmember Timmer and Vice Mayor Deemer. Who should I attribute that to, for a second? All right, thank you. Not everybody's had a chance to log in yet, so I'll be calling for the voice vote. Councilmember Feraldi?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
No, it's almost 7:45, no.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Uh, no.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes, let them vote. I mean, let them speak.
The motion passes 4-3.
Point of order. How can we know who was here and not here?
That's not a point of order.
It's not a point of order.
All right, whatever I need to ask.
Ask them. Who was here last night that wanted to speak? Okay, we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 people. Get in line, speak.
After public comment.
At the end?
After public comment. We got three signups for public comment.
Okay, so five.
Okay, we got five.
That's it.
That's what we're going to do. At the end of pu- public comment.
We have just three public comments to get through, and then, and then those five individuals will speak. The first section is public comment. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City council listens to your comments and may ask the city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions to make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking. There's no applause, cheers, or jeers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote businesses, or campaign for office. Agenda item number one. Hear from a citizen regarding religious freedoms violations. Risa Hayes. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Hello, my name is Risa Hayes. I live in Ward One. Thank you, councilors, mayor, vice mayor, for letting me speak tonight. I want to start by giving a little background about myself when it comes to religion as it pertains to this. I was raised conservative Christian. I was homeschooled with a religious background where I was required to memorize and understand biblical verses on a weekly basis. I went through Iwanas and made it to the top ranking of the people in my Iwana group. I also taught Sunday School, wrote a commentary on the Book of Genesis. I went to Liberty University and graduated. Religion has been something that has been part of my upbringing since before I have memories. This is something that is very important to me, and I want to emphasize that before someone accuses me of being anti-Christian or anti-religious. That being said, I want to talk about Councilwoman Timmer's line of questioning towards the applicants for the school board, specifically her use of the words absolute truth. Now, for those who were not raised religious, you may not know what that actually means, but those of us who are know exactly what she's saying. She's asking if the candidates will push for a creationism and religious education in the public school systems. She said it in a way that can be considered a plausible deniability, but that is what it is. And if you choose not to see that, that is your own decision. So, I want to talk about the legality of that. Religious freedom is in our First Amendment. That means that no religion, Christianity or not, is allowed to push their religion on another. That includes our public school system with the Supreme Court case of Stone v. Graham. Our public school systems are for the public, not a specific religious group. And in case you're wondering whether or not the founding fathers agreed with that, here is one from Thomas Jefferson, who said, "Religious institutions that use government power in support of themselves and force their views on persons of other faiths or of no faith undermine our civil rights." That is the founding father. That is what our country is built on. So, let's say we pretend that that's not true. Let's say we push a Christian religion in our public schools. Which one? Are you aware that there are 45,000 denominations of Christianity? Forty-five thousand? So, which one is it? Are we gonna do Baptist? Are we gonna do Catholic? Are we going to do Presbyterian? There are too many to make a specific educational decision. Also, if you want a religious schooling, there are 10 religious schools in Lynchburg, just with a quick Google search. That doesn't even require me looking further into it, and I'm sure there are more, because this is Lynchburg. So, any citizens that attend our public schools, whether they're atheists, Christian, Islamic, Hinduism, Buddhist, pagan, agnostic, they have a right to an education.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two. Hear from a citizen regarding school board appointments. Jeff Rosner. Please restate your name and locality of residence.
Jeff Rosner, Lynchburg. In city council's school board interviews, Deborah Tresker said, quote, "Evolution is taught in science." Well, I think we should, we should bring in creation as well, because we should teach them side by side," unquote. Dr. Harvey Klamm said, quote, "If we are going to teach theory of evolution, that's fair. But if we are not going to teach any other theories, then we make the theory a fact by default," unquote. The U.S. Supreme Court, in the case of Edwards versus Aguilar, ruled that a public school requirement to teach alternatives to evolution alongside teaching evolution is unconstitutional. In Virginia, a requirement to teach alternatives to evolution in public schools would also be contrary to Virginia's standards of learning, which include the following under biology, quote, Bio-7. The student will investigate and understand that populations change through time. Key ideas include, A, evidence is found in fossil records and through DNA analysis. B, genetic variation, reproductive strategies, and environmental pressures affect the survival of populations. C, natural selection is a mechanism that leads to adaptations and may lead to the emergence of new species. And D, biological evolution has scientific evidence and explanations," unquote. The Virginia Standards of Accreditation require, quote, "A program of instruction for kindergarten through grade 12 that is aligned to the standards of learning," unquote. So, a requirement to teach alternatives to evolution would raise accreditation issues. By your appointment votes, will city council members accept a school policy that would be unconstitutional and contrary to the standards of learning and the standards of accreditation? And now I have, under public comment rule B-14, I have some papers related to the public comment I just made, and I will provide them, as provided, to the clerk of council for the city council members. I'll go around that way.
While she's doing that, agenda item number three. Hear from a group representative regarding evil. Greg Berry, City elders. Please restate your name, group representative, and locality of residence.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and council members. My name is Greg Berry. I'm a resident of Ward Three, and I'm representing Lynchburg City elders. To God and His Son Jesus Christ be all the praise, honor, and glory. I want to talk tonight about Numbers, the Book of Numbers, chapter 22, where we find the account of Balaam. Balaam was a prophet for hire. He was summoned by Belik, the king of Moab, to curse the Israelites. Initially, God instructed Balaam not to go, but after further insistence from Belik and Balaam, God allowed him to go with a warning, "Speak only what I tell you." As Balaam sat out on the journey riding his donkey, God became angry because Balaam's intentions were not aligned with God's will. God intended to use a gift from, Balaam intended to use a gift from God against God's will. He simply saw an opportunity to cash in. An angel of the Lord stood in the way to oppose him. Balaam, unaware of the angel's presence, continued forward. His donkey, however, saw the angel and turned off the path. After Balaam struck the donkey, it pressed against the wall to avoid the angel crushing Balaam's foot. Balaam struck the donkey again. Finally, the donkey laid down and refused to move. And this is where he actually spoke, asking why he was struck. Then, Balaam's eyes were opened, and he saw that there was an angel. And the angel explained to him that he was actually almost lost his life, and that the donkey actually saved his life. This story doesn't end here. In chapter 31, we find that Balaam ultimately was killed by the Israelites because of his insistence of going where God didn't want him to go. The bottom line here is simple. This call for a tax increase is a curse against the people of Lynchburg. God gives us clear direction. Open your eyes and see what God is giving you, a clear warning. If you ignore God's direction, He will allow, He will allow us to do whatever we desire, but doing what we desire has severe consequences up to and including death. Two years ago, I warned the then-mayor to obey God's word, or she would be removed as mayor. She was ignoring me, and she was removed. I am not a prophet, but I do read God's word, and I realize that it has an application for today. I'm giving the same warning to you now, mayor. Either obey God, or He will surely remove you from your position, or potentially worse. This warning is especially needed in light of the disrespect you showed to the citizens of Lynchburg last night. This is clearly a slap in the face of every citizen, and we all deserve an apology and an equalization tax rate. Let go of your pride and submit to God. One last word for you, Mayor Taylor. Comes from Matthew 18, verse 7. "Woe unto the world because of offenses; for it must needs be that offenses come, but woe to that man by whom that offense cometh." For you, Mr. Feraldi, Romans 1, verse 28. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind to do those things which are not convenient. In Titus 1:16, "They profess that they know God, but in works they deny Him, being abominable and disobedient, and unto every good work reprobate." I'll say one more thing, mayor. You greatly disappoint me. You obviously are way over your head in this position. The best thing you can do for this city is to resign your position and give it to someone who is capable of handling it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item not on the agenda. Hear from a citizen from the June 23, 2025, public hearing. One of five.
Ms. Clerk, it was everybody. It was not one of five. It's everybody that was here.
I'm going by council's conversation, Councilor Missions, about how they respond to people.
But the council voted for the people that were here. There was no limit to the number. So, either we revote and we change what the vote was that was adopted?
I move that we listen to five residents from last night.
Yes.
I was here last night, and I didn't get to speak, and I would like to speak today.
I move that we listen to five residents.
He just came in. Come on, come on, young man.
I heard you deciding this on the phone as I was driving in. I'm not free to normally just show up every day.
This is not a back-and-forth conversation. This is a conversation for council.
Let him speak.
Council's already decided on this matter, Mr. Mayor.
Those five, six speak, and then that's it.
Please state your name and locality of residence.
My name is Sam Howe, Ward One. Thank you, Larry Taylor, mayor, and Vice Mayor Deemer, and members of council. I'm here to urge you to support the car tax plan that we should have had a public hearing on last night. Right now, there's a proposal on the table to lower the property tax rate from 89 cents to 84 cents. At first glance, that might seem like a good idea. We're gonna, we're gonna lower the taxes. We're gonna, we're gonna pay for some things. But let's, let's see who really benefits from this plan, and who ends up paying more. Under the previous equalization, massive commercial properties like Walmart and Frito-Lay receive significant tax relief. Walmart's property taxes went down by $75,000, and Frito-Lay's taxes went down by $55,000. That's $130,000 in tax relief to two corporations. Meanwhile, my taxes went up under the previous equalization. And if we get down to 84 cents, I'll be asked to pay even more. Meanwhile, Walmart will save another $17,000, and Frito-Lay, 12. Ordinary taxpayers and homeowners like me and members of the council will be asked to pay more. That's not tax relief. That is a tax shift from corporations to working families. But there's a better option. Instead of further lowering the property tax, we should focus on lowering the car tax, a move that offers meaningful relief to more residents across the board. The car tax is something that hits nearly every household in this community. It doesn't matter whether you own your home or whether you rent your home, whether you live in a modest home or something more expensive. If you drive a car, you pay this tax. And lowering it puts money back in the pockets of people who need it most. Middle-class families, young workers, and, believe it or not, seniors on fixed incomes. Unlike the property tax cut, which disproportionately affects, disproportionately benefits, commercial property owners, lowering the car tax is targeted and fair. It supports our residents directly and not corporate profit margins. Let's be honest, Walmart and Frito-Lay don't need another tax break, but the working people do. So, I urge my fellow residents, and more importantly, my elected officials, please think carefully about the choice in front of us. Let's choose families. Let's choose fiscal responsibility, and let's choose a plan that helps the people. Let's lower the, let's lower the car tax and not the property tax. Thank you for your time.
Item not on the agenda. Hear from a citizen from the June 23, 2025, public hearing. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Peter Sepharati, Ward One. Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing this session of comment. I appreciate it. I'd like to address a couple things. First of all, I really do consider it a lack of disrespect the way that meeting was ended last night, and people who made sacrifices to be here to speak were not able to do that. I think that the meeting could have been adjourned, or that, you could have been handled in another way, Mr. Mayor. Apparently, you decided not to vote for the car tax, so that's why that whole plan fell apart. But the meeting didn't have to be adjourned right then. You could have still listened to what people had to say, because a lot of them have been waiting to give input on this process for quite a while, and there hasn't been really that much input received from the public, as far as I can see. I'd like to speak to the reason for, Councilwoman Reed's reason for wanting to close down the meeting, and that's because she didn't want us to hang around a long time for nothing. Well, as far as I know, I didn't have leg-orient on. I can leave any meeting here anytime I want. I don't but I was given, not given the option to stay for the meeting. I didn't need permission to leave. I didn't need an opportunity to leave. I can make my own opportunity. I'd also like to speak to the fact that saying that you don't want to hear the discussion from last night is a little disingenuous, because any comment that people made on the tax rate would have been germane to the issue at hand. So, just because somebody is for the car tax or against the car tax, if they get up here and they say, "I'm for it, against it," you also have an opportunity to say what you are for, and we were denied that opportunity. Now, I'd like to point out something right here. For you who haven't actually looked at the budget here, this is page one of the budget. This is a rendering of the city council's, the city's organizational chart. Shows the citizens at the top, city council, the representatives are underneath them, and then they are managing, to manage the city manager, deputy manager, assistant manager, and all the other little boxes below them. Leadership, ideas, policies, agendas are to come from the citizens. This seems to be the organization chart of the city these days. City manager, Uberolos, sub-managers, lots of boxes. After them, they're managing the city council. And the city council is issuing directives to the, to the citizens about what they want, what they need, what they should have. No, let's get this, let's get the chart rearranged the way it's supposed to go. Thank you for listening.
Item not on the agenda. Hear from a citizen from the June 23, 2025, public hearing. Please state your name and locality of residence.
Hello, it's Risa Hayes again, Ward One. My issue with all of the stuff that's been going on with the budget has been the way the city manager has been used as a scapegoat, not only by citizens, but also city council by not defending them. What a lot of people don't realize is when the city council makes, or the city manager makes a budget, it is based off of the guidelines that city council gives him. He does not choose what goes on and what goes off of the budget. It is a decision by you. You make that decision by saying, "I want it 76 cents. I want it 89 cents. I want it $1.05, $1.03," whatever it is you guys are discussing now. And I know that councillor or Vice Mayor Deemer knows that, because he was in the Citizens Academy with me, where we discuss these kinds of things with the city manager, who allowed us to have open questions about these different issues. So, you have continually allowed citizens to defame, abuse, insult our city manager, and I'm not surprised he's not here. I'm surprised he shows up to any of them, considering how much of an attack on his character there has been, and I haven't seen a single public statement defending him. Now, if you've made a public statement and I've missed it, I will apologize, but I haven't seen one. I've seen a lot of accusations. I've seen it on Living in Lynchburg. I've seen it here in these meetings. I've seen it online. Everyone accuses the city manager of controlling the budget and controlling Everyone accuses the city manager of controlling the budget and controlling the citizens, and he's the real one who wants to take all of our money. It's ridiculous, and you know it. All of you know it. You three who like to point out how much you're saving the citizens, you allow people to abuse the city manager. And you three who are against it, but don't say anything, I haven't heard anything to defend the city manager. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you're trying to play neutral between these parts, but something has to be done. You cannot continue to let an employee be treated this way. If I was the city manager and I was treated this way, I would have quit ages ago, because it is completely inappropriate. And it will continue to be inappropriate for as long as you all allow it to be. So you either need to use your positions of power and defend the employees that you have, and acknowledge the fact that the budget that he is presenting is based off the guidelines that you specifically gave him, or, I mean, I would suggest that the city manager sue the city. I would suggest he do it for defamation of character, and for assassination of character, and for continually being treated in a hostile work environment. And that's all I have to say.
Item not on the agenda here from a citizen from the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing. Please state your name and locality of residence.
My name's Ron Storer, Ward four. I understand the city needs money to run, yet they want to increase my taxes when I'm on a fixed income. I'm retired. Now, you tell me that you need all this cash, these millions of dollars, but you're not telling me how I'm gonna be able to live in Lynchburg once you enact your tax increase. I'd be glad for Walmart and Frito-Lay to not have to pay so much in taxes. Maybe the groceries and other products that they provide would be a little less expensive. The last time I went to Kroger and bought three little bags of groceries, sixty dollars for bread and vegetables. I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, and you want to increase my taxes? And a hundred and twenty dollars for my truck? That's two thousand and seven, that I can't get a thousand dollars for on resale. You think your tax plan is going to work for me, a retired person in the city of Lynchburg? I'm not the only one here that's retired. I'm not the only one here on a fixed income. And I'm not the only one here that's retired and on a fixed income that doesn't approve of your methods. Thank you.
Item not on the agenda here from a citizen from the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing. Please state your name and locality of residence.
I don't know if I'm five or six, but my name is David Ream. I live in Ward three, and I do want to thank you all for hearing me out today. I did come yesterday. I was, I was listening on the phone coming in, and I heard that you were giving anyone a chance to speak, and so I tried to hurry in to get here as quick as I could. Again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing me out today. My message is really simple, and that is, you can be a hero, and you can lower the tax rate, and you can set it, it seems, rather arbitrarily. You can set it at almost any number you want to. From what I was understanding, you can completely remove the car tax if you want to, and so I don't really understand how this is set and how this is done, but I can tell you this, that since I've moved here, and I love living here, but since I've moved here, my property tax has done nothing but increase, and increased dramatically. I actually go to the trouble of paying my property tax in person, in cash, because I want to understand the full value of that. I know many people can just, you can pay by credit card and do all kinds of other things, but I am surrendering my money for the benefit of this city, and I'm doing so with my full knowledge and person. I come down here and do that. I don't try to do it the convenient, easy way. My money doesn't come to me easily, and I don't part with it easily. And it's important that it is managed well and spent well. And if, I don't know, I'm a simple man. I appreciate that you lower the taxes for Walmart and Lay's and the other corporations. You want to bring in, you want to, you want the benefits and the city that that brings. Well, the similar thing with us, as the gentleman was just saying, there's folks that are like me. I get a pension, I'm still working, but I'm on a very limited income, and my income is not even close to keeping up with the rate of increase in my property taxes that has occurred since I've been here since two thousand and eighteen. And I know that we want to attract good businesses and have good jobs. We also want to attract and keep good citizens and good homeowners. So my, my final solution to you is since you seem to have the ability to set the rate anywhere you'd like, I would encourage you to be a hero to the citizens of our community, and that you would eliminate the car tax altogether and lower the property tax. We were talking about equalization a few months ago. There were many people that spoke in favor of it. Maybe the ratio was four to one, five to one, I don't, three to one. I don't know the ratio, but when I was here at the last meeting, where there was a hearing about the lowering of the equalization rate, it was lower. And it can be lower, and it looks like you have the power to lower it. So please, lower our taxes. Thank you.
Item not on the agenda here from a citizen from the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five public hearing. Please state your name and locality of residence.
It's probably gonna be the very shortest speech I've ever given here. Dr. Beth White, Ward three. I was gonna speak in favor of the car tax plan last night. Now, I am a widow. I work two jobs. I take care of my elderly mother. I live in a one-hundred-year-old house that has one-hundred-year-old house problems, with no person to help me fix them. In crunching the numbers, I actually would have saved two hundred and sixty-five dollars under Mr. Feraldi's tax plan last night, compared to two hundred and thirty-five dollars under the equalization rate. When the meeting was adjourned last night, I left. Why? Because I simply did not feel safe in making these comments during the mob mentality that was watched and witnessed by many online. And I know it was witnessed by many, because my phone was blowing up while I was trying to eat supper at the T-room. I listened, and I don't intimidate easy, just to say that. I listened as one said that if anyone dared to say the Mr. Mitchians bullied them, water balloons would be thrown at those individuals. Another had a large sign on a pole, which I distinctly remember city council in their own rules in a meeting either a year or two years ago, saying, "We can't have those, because on poles, they can be construed as a weapon." And yet, that sign said, "We need to fire Mr. Bender." And it was purposefully placed in front of me, and the comment was made, "Let's see if anybody stands up for Mr. Bender," because the last meeting, I stood up for Mr. Bender. Another citizen said that Mayor Taylor needs to be kicked out of his church for the actions that were taken last night. We had calls for city staff to be fired. We call council members in cries of taxation without representation. You talk about following the rules, but we have rules in place for public comments, but they are ignored. By the way, I heard from several who said that they can't afford to pay for a house, and therefore have to pay a large rent, and they hope to get some relief from paying the car tax, which they barely have money to do. I also appreciate the fact that I didn't have to stay here until three o'clock in the morning, and yes, we all have freedom to leave, but I've been sitting at these meetings for almost three years now, for every single one. And I appreciate the fact I didn't have to stay here until three o'clock, because I have to be at work at seven-thirty in the morning. By the way, Isaiah one eighteen says, quote, "Come now, let us reason together," unquote. What happened to the art of compromise and talking like grown adults instead of yelling at each other? Saturday, I sat with a member of the Lynchburg Democrat Committee and had a lovely conversation, and I'm a Republican, just as red as can be, but we sat there like adults and had an adult conversation about what we need to do in the city to fix it. I would encourage you, find the art of compromise, and do it.
The next section is general business, includes new items for discussion. Agenda item number four, consideration of adopting a resolution to direct, direct the notification of the Campbell County Utilities and Service Authority of the city's intention to enter into a new water contract on July one, two thousand and twenty-seven, while also reserving the right to renegotiate the terms of the city's current contract with the CCUSA.
I had a question. I had said at the four o'clock meeting that the first item under general business we would go over would be budgetary in nature. Do we want to do this first, or are we gonna get Mr. Mitchell his hall pass to go home? Or, I'm amenable. I just know, that was my intent, so I just want to be clear.
Mr. Mayor, I have to tell you. I can tell you that the budget staff is putting the final touches on getting all the numbers together, so if we continue with the rest of the agenda until we get down to budget, we'll be ready at that point in time.
I'm flexible. If anything, it clears Mr. Mitchell up to get out of here, so.
Mr. Mitchell.
This item was discussed during the June tenth PDC meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a presentation?
It's up there. Take this one.
Oh, I'll see it. Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As mentioned, this item was before the PDC, the last PDC meeting. This is related to the current water contract between the city of Lynchburg and the Campbell County Utilities and Service Authority. Just a quick overview, I'll review the current contract and the supplement to the current contract, and then provide a recommendation, excuse me. So the current contract term is from July first, two thousand and seven, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. We must provide CCUSA a notification by June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, two years prior to the contract expiring, of whether we intend to renew the contract or terminate the contract. If we do not provide notice, then the contract will renew automatically under the same terms of the current contract. The contract methodology is based upon the cost of service study, so it's a wholesale water contract with CCUSA. The current provisional rate is two dollars and fifty cents per hundred cubic feet. Air customer rate in the city is, CCUSA's customer rate is four dollars and ninety-five cents per hundred cubic feet, and air customer rate in the city is three dollars and twenty-nine cents. The average annual revenue from this contract is about six hundred thousand dollars. The May thirtieth, two thousand and two, first supplement to the original contract was incorporated into this current contract by reference. It provides, the city will provide up to one point one-three-six million gallons per day of water to the Mount Athos service area, primarily BWXT. The sale of additional water would be negotiated in good faith with a five-hundred gallon per day minimum purchased through two thousand and twenty-seven. And the current contract stipulates water cannot be sold in any new retail or commercial space greater than five thousand, fifty thousand square feet without city council approval. Allows for possibility of revenue sharing, and also allows for the negotiation of capacity for future sales to other political subdivisions. So the recommendation is that we intend, notify CCUSA of our intent to renew the contract, because it does provide a benefit to the city to sell water to CCUSA. It helps keep air rates lower to our citizens. But we do want to reserve, and the resolution that's before you reserves the right to renegotiate certain terms of that contract. So we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to sit down at the negotiating table with those terms. Any changes to the contract would come back before city council, before being adopted and approved, but we just want to make sure that we have the ability to make the contract better than it is currently, and also to clean up some provisions where it's incorporating an older contract as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
No question. Mr. Faradi?
Thank you. Yes, I do move to approve.
Does that require a second?
It does not require a second. Let's vote. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
Are you shaking that now? Let's see if it's awake. The motion passes seven-zero. Agenda item number five, consideration of reducing a resolution amending the FY two thousand and twenty-five city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating fifteen thousand to fund a wayfinding system for the Dunbar Community Schoolyard. This item was discussed during Finance Committee meeting earlier today.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Very quickly, this is a grant that was received by the city from the AARP. It would fund wayfinding signs for the Dunbar Schoolyard Project, and it did go to the Finance Committee meeting this afternoon.
Thanks, sir. I don't have any questions. I think this is a great thing. It's, no local match is required, that's right?
Absolutely, yes.
So this doesn't require a second, since it came through committee, and I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Does it require a second?
It doesn't require a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Let's vote. Oh, hold on. I'm sorry. I just want to commend the staff. When we looked at the Diamond Hill Plan, there were several dollars required for that. We received some from CDBG. I'll commend your staff, I'll search for other funds, so we can do all the things in the proposal, so I appreciate you and your staff. Thank you so much. Thank you, Brother Martin.
Thank you, sir.
Initiate a vote now. The motion passes seven-zero. Agenda item number six, consideration of reducing a resolution amending the FY two thousand and twenty-five city federal state aid fund budget and appropriating twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to purchase personnel protective equipment for the fire department. This item was discussed during Finance Committee meeting earlier today, and I believe Fire Chief Wormser is also here.
All right, so this item came before Councilwoman today. This was for turnout gear, that's for hot weather, brush gear. It is no local match on this one, is that right?
That's correct.
And it'll be lightweight turnout gear. So on a day like today, when we're hitting triple digits, you could really appreciate being able to get this stuff that's a little more lightweight for these guys to be a little more comfortable, keep the heart rate down while they're fighting brush fires and things like that. So this doesn't require a second, I'll move to adopt.
Thank you, sir. Anything to add?
I do not have anything to add. That was, that pretty much covers it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Cash the vote, please.
Initiate a vote now. The motion passes seven-zero. We are now at the budget. Are we prepared?
They are. You're done?
Okay.
She may move on.
Yeah.
We'll get budget after that.
Yes, ma'am.
I feel very passionate that I can say this. As I sat in the mayor's seat for two years, and had people come to the podium for public comment over and over again, very understanding of people's opinions on everyone that sits up here, you're not gonna all like us. Get it? Get your emails, and have sat there and, and looked face to face when you have had your very strong opinions. We have rules or procedure. We read them and tell you what you can and can't say, and we have to abide by them, too. I want you to be very careful in how you address members of council, because some comments very much come across like threats. And there were some statements made tonight that a hundred percent sounded like threats to me, especially directed towards our mayor. So you can have your First Amendment right to say what you want to say, and you can use the Bible as a weapon if that's what you choose to do, but you need to be very Because he's my brother. So you can say what you want to say about all of us. The Bible says, "Speak the truth in love." So I'm asking you to please... So I'm asking you to please, all of you, especially when you're going to bring the Lord's Word up here, remember what Jesus said to do with it. Thank you.
I know there's a recommendation to move to school board. Again, I'm amenable. I have an aspect of what was discussed at the work session in mind that I'm ready to bring to the table, but I'm flexible. I look to my colleagues to wherever you want to take things up.
We're in the process of making so that council can have documents that you can further, you can better understand what we need to discuss.
Mr. Mayor. One thing real quick, I'd like to respond to what Councilman Reed said. Just by reading that section 5.4, prohibited conduct from rules procedure, it says, "All persons appearing before the council or in the council chamber," and so this is the rules, right, for all of you. "While a meeting of the councils in session will not be allowed to: (1) campaign for public office; (2) promote private business ventures; (3) use profanity or vulgar language or gestures; (4) use language to insult or demean any person or which, when directed at a public official employee, is not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures; make non-German or frivolous statements; interrupt other speakers or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, including but not limited to applause, cheers, jeers, etc.; engage in behavior that intimidates others or address the council on issues that do not concern the services, policies, affairs of the council or the city; display signs, flags, posters, placards, or the like in a manner that obstructs the view of a meeting attendee in the council chamber." So just wanted to read it out loud. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Agenda item number eight, consideration of appointing school board members for terms beginning July 1st, 2025 in districts 1, 2, and 3. Council held interviews on June 12th and 13th with candidates from districts 1, 2, and 3 for four terms beginning July 1, 2025. And of course, one of those for District 2 is an unexpired term ending a year earlier, so June 30, 2027. Mr. Mayor, turn back over to you.
Let's start. Starting with District 1, may I have a motion to for an appointment? Yes, sir.
I move for Mr. Bush.
Mr. Bush? Is there a second?
No second, Mr. Mayor.
No second.
I'd like to move for a motion of Selena Morgan.
Is there a second?
No second, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Reed?
What?
School board.
Oh, you're asking for me to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion for Mr. Nigel Eileen.
Nigel Eileen?
Second.
Discussion?
Known Nigel for quite some time. He is a, he's a true servant. And I know that he's got the time and the energy to dedicate to the position. He's got some experience. Not some, a lot of experience educating kids through his church. And he's just a man of esteemed integrity and brings a lot of qualifications with him. And I think that he will be somebody that is kind of a calm presence on our school board. That's going to be very helpful, and I am just very thankful to have the opportunity to support him.
Ms. Deemer?
I don't know if you want to speak to your second.
Yeah, sure. That's easy. Pastor Eileen, I've known for a long time. In fact, he was a student of my father's at one point in the seminary. And the only thing I can say is, he and I don't always agree on things. And it's usually me that's wrong. But I have to concur that he is a calming influence. He creates smooth waters wherever he goes. And I can't think of a better skill set for school board than to, to have a gentleman of his stature and his character. And I'm sure I won't agree with all his positions, but I will, I will vouch for the character of a man who I think will bring real quality to our school board, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that has been a blessing and a challenge in the school board process is we have a number of really great candidates. I, I think Mr. Bush is an excellent candidate. I am throwing my support behind Pastor Eileen. I really believe in his background and capacity for collaborative approach, and that is very much needed right now. He's demonstrated that in his history and work within the city with tutoring programs and the like, and I think he'll be a great asset to the school board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you choose a candidate? Ms. Reed?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion? Let's vote.
Initiating vote now. The motion passes 5-2. Mr. Mayor?
Continuing with District 2. Excuse me.
I'd like to move for, make a motion for Mike Barron.
If I could clarify really quick, this would be for the new term? Not the unexpired?
New term.
Yes, okay.
This is for, not for?
Yeah, this is the new term.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I know Mr. Barron. I've known him for a few years now. I think we've heard from many people who support him. He is a parent of LCS kids, so he understands the issues within the schools. He's worked for the school system. And I think he, he's been a teacher, so he understands needs in public, public education. And I think he would be a real asset to the school board.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we appoint Dr. Harvey Clam to District 2.
Any discussion?
Again, I, I do have a relationship with Dr. Clam. He was my soccer coach back in high school. And, and to be honest, he wasn't my favorite guy. He made me run a lot of suicides and a lot of hard work. But we almost won the state championship, so ultimately I think that paid off. What I do know about Dr. Clam is he has probably the most extensive experience of any of the candidates that we've been offered. Again, I think he's wise. He's a calming influence and brings to the table actual administrative school success. And if there's anything Lynchburg needs, it's some school success. So I hope we will give him a fair shot. I'm, as long as he doesn't make him run suicides, I think he'll make a great school board member.
I, I know Mr. Barron. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Barron and his leadership in our community. So this is not in any way disparagement towards him. I believe that what Mr. Harvey Clam brings to the table is absolutely essential for our school board. The amount of experience and insight is invaluable. And I would encourage people to watch his interview. I did ask about absolute truth, and he had an excellent answer. A portion of it was read tonight, not in its full context. And the value of that question of how we can establish common ground as a community largely starts with what we believe in as reality and what we believe in when it comes to scholarship and academics. And I believe that he brought a well-rounded answer that was sadly taken out of context, but a well-rounded answer to that question and a number of the questions that were brought by this council. And I believe he would be an excellent asset to the school board.
Mr. Wild?
Thank you. I do not support his nomination. I think, first of all, number one, you need to have worked in a public school system. He has not worked in a public school system. I think you need to have children in our school system so you can be familiar with it. He has not volunteered in our school system at all. I think you need to be someone with kids in our school system and works in our school system. That could be an asset that has a relevance to our children today. I think that is so important for that nomination. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
I, I really appreciate Dr. Clam. I think he has a lot of valuable qualities. However, I'm choosing between Dr. Clam and Mr. Barron. I would still maintain my support for Mr. Barron because of what I said. We don't have anybody on the school board currently that has children in the school system. He has experience with LCS specifically. And Dr. Clam, while he does have the experience that Vice Mayor Deemer mentioned, it is in the private school sector, and he does not have a lot of familiarity. We asked him with, with LCS specifically, and I think it is very important with the issues that we're specifically struggling with that we have someone that understands the issues and the policies that need to be decided on within the Lynchburg City School System. So I think that Mr. Barron still has, is better suited for what we need right now. Although I, again, that is no offense at all to the value of Dr. Clam. So I do not support the substitute motion.
I like Dr. Clam, but I have to support Mike Barron. He's, he's a school bus driver. He can relate to us. He'd get down everywhere to road meet the road. You know, he handled the children well. He's in the community. So I'm casting my support behind Mike Barron. Yes, yes, sir.
I'll be voting against the substitute motion, not for the merits of Dr. Clam. Rather, I believe Mr. Barron deserves the full term. And if there's a motion to consider Dr. Clam, then we can certainly consider that at that time. But I'll be voting against the substitute motion, so we can lock in Mike and then move to the next item.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting the substitute motion for Dr. Clam for the full term. And now we're about to find out why I wanted a ballot process because I'm going to have to say something that I would rather not have had to say. But my concerns with Mr. Barron from the interview was his discussion about a program called Hot Topics that he led in another school. And he discussed getting together with, can't remember if it was middle school or high school aged kids with some after-school program called Hot Topics where they covered everything under the sun, including politics and, you know, various things that are exactly what parents have told us they don't want touched with their children in schools. I like Mr. Barron. I think he's a fantastic guy. He's very charismatic. But my concern with that one thing is deep. I've got children in the Lynchburg City School System, and I can tell you right now, I don't want teachers or administrators or anything, anything remotely like that trying to indoctrinate my kids when it comes to politics, gender, or sexuality. And somebody that ran a program called Hot Topics that discussed some of those things with kids as an adult is a real concern for me. That is not the Public School Division's responsibility. So I ask you to reconsider your support for Mr. Barron and support the substitute motion for Dr. Harvey Clam. Thank you.
Let us vote.
Initiating the vote for the substitute motion to appoint Dr. Harvey Clam.
It says appoint District 1, Ms. Fird.
It should not.
I'm reading it on my screen. It says appoint District 1. I'm reading it on my screen.
Okay, I will reset it. I'm resetting the vote now and starting it again.
There we go. That fixed it. Thank you, ma'am.
The motion fails 3-4. The main motion is back on the floor.
Mr. Feraldi?
I want to clarify for the record what this program, he said he ran in Texas, if memory serves. This was an after-school activity for an hour where kids could come in and debate, and he was the facilitator. There was no instruction. As a matter of fact, I had a very similar experience at public school, in high school, where I had rigorous debates with someone I disagreed vehemently with about why Obama should have been president. And it was some of the most memorable conversations I've had in formulating how to discuss issues with those I disagreed with and then still go home on the same bus and be neighborly. So I disagree entirely with the manipulation of what Mr. Barron was saying. And no, I'm not going to be interrupted.
No, Mr. Mayor, point of order. He is absolutely manipulating. When I said, I was not manipulating what Mr. Barron said. He need, Mr. Feraldi needs to stop speaking to the intentions or the thoughts of council members up here. He's free to have his own thoughts, and he is free to express them. He is not free to tell the public what my thoughts are and what my intentions are, Mr. Mayor. He doesn't have kids, so he definitely doesn't have them in Lynchburg City Schools. So I'm very passionate about this because I have kids in Lynchburg City Schools.
Thank you.
Mayor, in your opinion, Mr. Feraldi?
Go ahead.
I want to ask, am I less of a member of this council because I don't have kids yet?
You are not.
Thank you. Let's vote.
Mr. Deemer?
I had a question that I asked almost every single applicant. And it was about the grant that Easy Class received because of some student input for $10,000 to create a, basically a safe room to go to. It's for all groups, but specifically the goal mostly was an LBGQ friendly room. And my question was simple. Would you have accepted the grant or not? The, uh, I wasn't using it as a litmus test, but I did think that it would tell me kind of the heart of a, of a man or a woman if, if they would have accepted it. And the Lynchburg School Board, I think wisely, chose not to accept it because, again, it doesn't really have anything to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic, or Hot Topics, or any of these other things that really aren't the focus and the primary goal and, and reason we have a public school system. Not to have Hot Topics, not to have safe rooms and beanbags and candles and Himalayan salt making nice sweet smells. I mean, that's just not what we're about. So I mentioned this to you afterwards, and you indicated that we can, we can work on Mr. Barron and get him right on that. I don't, I don't, I don't want to have to work on somebody. That was intended to get at their heart, how they would act in an actual situation with an actual decision that was being pushed from the students' up. And I think adults need to make these decisions. I love student involvement. But ultimately, there needs to be adults in the room and say, no, that's not what we're about. This isn't the primary goal of school, of education in the Lynchburg City School Systems. So I can't in my good conscience support somebody who said he would have accepted that grant. And I don't think I agree with anybody who thinks that we will change him. And I think it's a pretty good predictor of where it's going. So we can ignore that predictor, or we can, can vote accordingly, and I'm going to vote opposed to it. Not that I don't think Mr. Barron is a nice guy, but I just don't want him in charge of our kids.
Mr. Mitchell, we got a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I get to speak to the motion. I've had an opportunity to. You can go first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I have a lot of respect for Mr. Barron and his leadership in our community. I had intended to vote for others tonight, so I'm, I'm just going to withhold that. But it doesn't seem you probably need my vote, so something- So something that Mr. Barron does that I do want to compliment, he brings his whole self into everything he does. And I am confident he will bring his whole self to the school board. Sometimes I disagree with parts of that whole self, and there's a little tension, but that's what this is all about, and that can work. So I will be supporting other candidates, but I do think, Mr. Barron, that he brings his whole self to the table. So thank you.
First thing I have a question about is, how does that affect being a bus driver and being appointed to the school board, Mr. City Attorney?
So that may be something we have to look into, because all school employees are appointed by the school board. He may not be able to maintain that position. But what we'll do, we'll look into that. And if it turns out that he is appointed, he'll be faced with the decision, if he has to, to resign his position or not. But that's really, it's really an issue from his perspective versus council's perspective.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we got that cleared out. The comments that the Vice Mayor made are exactly, it's not a personal thing, it's, people are trying to creep into our schools. That grant was funded by an organization called the It Gets Better Project, which is associated with another organization called the Trevor Project. And Trevor Project had open chat rooms for kids to talk to queer adults on their website. You've got to be able to look into these things and see exactly what it is you're looking at. And you can't just make these snap decisions. If you don't know where the money's coming from and what could be tied to it, you can't be supporting these things. In addition to that, they support gender-affirming care for kids, to try to transition kids. And that's just an absolutely horrible thing, the promotion of the mutilation of children. I just cannot, cannot support that. So my, this is not personal. So here's my ask, Mr. Barron, because I think you got the votes. Do the homework, because I don't think you support any of this stuff. I really believe that. And I say this in a way that I really mean it. Protect our kids, protect my kids, protect your kids, protect everybody's kids like they're your kids. And I think we'll be fine. But we have got to be on guard for the influences trying to come into our school division.
Let us vote.
The motion passes. Four, three.
Yes, sir.
For the second position, I move for Jabri.
Jabri.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion.
I'd like to make a substitute for Dr. Harvey Clam.
Dr. Harvey Clam? We have a second.
I'll second him. No. That's good. Thank you.
Let's speak to you.
I stand by my earlier comments. I recognize that there are a number of things that have to be balanced within the nature of the school division. So you want people who are in it and hands-on. You also want an outside perspective, and we bring these things together of various areas of experience, and that's how you create progress, when you're able to have the conversation. So I believe that Dr. Harvey Clam, again, brings that outside perspective with a level of excellence and experience that will be an asset to the board. And I believe that he and Mr. Barron together would be a great combination, because Mr. Barron has kids in the system, he's hands-on in the system, and Mr. Harvey Clam has an experience, and again, an excellence, and a track record for being able to provide that as well. So I think the two together would be a phenomenal combination. I stand behind Dr. Harvey Clam.
I'm going to wait, wait till the mayor comes back for my comments, because I think he needs to hear them.
That's a fair point. Mr. Vice Mayor, I move to recess.
I move to recess.
All right, we have a move to recess.
I can speak if that keeps us moving.
Go ahead, Councilman Frog.
I've got the second, actually.
I appreciate this application for Dr. Clam. I supported Jabri the last time he applied. I support him now. And what strikes me is dedication to, even though he was shot down last time, to do it again. He's got multiple children in the system. He's active in the community. And on those two questions, Dr. Clam could not submit that he is spending any time at all in our schools. And I would venture to guess that we need more folks who are parents on the school board, who can make decisions about the children that they are sending to the system. There's more buy-in. And so that's why I support Jabri. And I'll be voting against the substitute motion.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't get a chance to speak in my second yet. A gentleman like Dr. Harvey Clam only comes around once in a very long time. He's actually a Virginia State Certified, Virginia State Certified Superintendent. His background is unbelievable, and this is a policymaking role. And he has a tremendous amount of strength in that, in that aspect. And he's essentially unmatched. We need a fresh perspective in Lynchburg City Schools. We have a new superintendent and new leadership coming on board. And when you've got somebody who's actually done the job of a superintendent in a school system, is able to mentor a new superintendent on the school board, that's a really valuable thing. It's a very valuable thing. I think that to pass up on this opportunity to appoint Dr. Clam for two years to our school board would be a tremendous mistake. We have an opportunity right now to set things in the right direction with our new superintendent right away. And he is somebody that is going to be able to get to work understanding the academic environment and what we need, which is academic success on day one. And I think that there is just absolutely no match for what he brings to the table out of all the candidates that we've had. And we had some really, really great candidates this time around. And I'll tell you, I will say, Jabri really impressed me, because he interviewed last year, and he interviewed this year, and he has absolutely come a long way. But we can't pass up this opportunity for Dr. Harvey Clam. I think even if it was just two years that we got out of him, it would be two pivotal years to have his influence to help put our school division on the right track.
Ms. Timmer.
Thank you. I know I spoke to my motion initially, but I do want to share these comments with you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's significant. Three quick points. I feel, and I mentioned this before when you were out of the room, I feel that Dr. Harvey Clam and Mr. Mark Barron will be a great pairing. I know that you don't pair by districts, but if we were doing a team building in a three-legged race, I mean, the breadth that those two bring together is valuable, because you have the hands-on bus driver parent who's in the community in this way, and you have the expertise of someone who has sat in the seat in the middle of a major transition of a school superintendent. And the value that he brings from the outside perspective, paired with the inside perspective, the expertise with the hands-on, that's what we need. We need a level of diversity on this school board. People coming from different backgrounds coming together. Jabri was actually someone that I was planning on supporting, Jabri or Mr. Jack Collins for various reasons. But Jack, his experience and his connections, Jabri, I really enjoyed his interview. But I believe that if we pass up on Dr. Harvey Clam, especially in this pairing with Mr. Barron, that, you know, we lose a valuable opportunity in the midst of a transition. And the other thing that I will say is this, this is a young school board. And that's on us. There's a shift in council, there's a shift in city leadership. We need some people with practical experience in these roles. And Mr. Clam provides that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you. So, again, I think Dr. Clam has a lot to offer, and I'm not taking anything away from his expertise. But I actually think that Jabri and Mike would be a powerhouse if we're talking about teams to complement each other, talk about diversity. Mr. Poe works part-time in our group home. He understands a group of children in our school system that are needing a special amount of attention that he understands specifically, that are struggling in our school system, and landing in that place. They represent a large percentage of kids in our schools that not everybody can understand. And that is a strength that a school board member needs to be able to have when we're addressing issues like truancy, and behavior, and academic problems. And that is, a lot of the times, the kids that end up in our juvenile justice system and in the group home. And Jabri has experience with those exact kids. He mentors those exact children. So I think not only having children in our school system, but then having hands-on experience with some of our more challenging students and children, coming out of them, is something that is a huge strength, because those are some of the discussions our school board's having, and they're having their academic success committee, they have their discipline committee, and he can definitely bring something to the table that, again, Dr. Clam, he has a set of experience, but he doesn't have relatability to our specific students right now that Mr. Poe absolutely has. And I think that's a strength we cannot overlook. Thank you.
Mr. Wild.
Again, for the reason I stated earlier, I just question the motives of anyone who has not volunteered in our school system, but yet you want to serve on the school board. I don't understand that. I think you need to have some invested interest. You have children in the school board, school system, and you never even volunteered in our school system? I have to question that. Thank you.
Mr. Deemer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Clam, as an actual superintendent, is, the fact that he's willing to basically step down and take a volunteer position, serving as an unpaid school board member, is pretty amazing. I've heard it said he has no public school experience, but that's not true. As a professor at Liberty University, he does something my mom also used to do as an education professor at Liberty University. And that's supervising Liberty University education students who are student teaching in Lynchburg Public School System. So Dr. Clam is in the same position my mom was in, where he is supervising those folks in the public school system. He has a very direct connection to Lynchburg City School System. And I would just say that, again, passing this opportunity up a second time, it's the diamond, it's the gold ring, it's the answer to our dreams, in a way. Because what we're doing isn't working. I don't know if anybody's paying attention, but in every measurable way that you can look at our Lynchburg City School System, whether it's enrollment going down, they're taking them out and they're putting them in Dr. Clam's school. So why are they doing that? Well, I guess I can tell you, there's a guy who can probably tell you why, Dr. Clam. Because that's where a lot of our city school system students and their parents are making a choice, and they're voting with their feet. And if we're really, truly serious about saving our schools and our public school system, we can't keep doing things the same old way. The same old way has got us where we are. And I want to save our public school system. I think it used to be a diamond for the city of Lynchburg. And it's not quite that anymore, to say it nicely. Whether it's teacher satisfaction, the teachers that I talked to that worked for Dr. Clam, extremely satisfied. So if that's what we really care about, teacher satisfaction, Dr. Clam has got proven experience. Scores, high scores. We say we care about academics. Dr. Clam's done it. He has actual experience as a superintendent with policy to help improve scores. So if we're serious about scores, we got a guy who, for whatever reason, is willing to step down into this position and give us a couple of good years. I say we take it and run. You know, the enrollment is going down for a reason, and the parents are voting with their feet for a reason. So the same old thing isn't going to work. If we are serious and we love our schools, we need to do something different. And he has direct public school oversight of student teachers in his role at Liberty. And he's going to bring gravitas to this in an older, wiser voice. And I think that kind of voice is immeasurably needed on our school board. And I sure hope we don't miss this opportunity twice.
Mr. Farodi.
Respectfully, I would disagree. I don't need more administrators leading this school board. I don't need more professors. I don't need more teachers. I don't need more doctors. I want parents. I want parents. Because they're the ones who keep saying that they're the ones ignored being a ping-pong ball between us and the school board. I don't want more folks who have administrative background leading our school division. The only thing that is going to be different is that we have multiple parents on the school board. Even back when I first got elected, you had medical doctors, firefighters, okay, you had a couple of kids in the system. You didn't have a lot of folks on the school board with kids in the system. So for me, that's huge, especially given how the last year and a half with school closure conversation has gone. I need folks with real buy-in and skin in the game. Jabri's got that. So again, I'll be voting against the substitute for Dr. Clam, and I encourage us to vote and move on.
Vote on the substitute motion.
Substitute motion to appoint Dr. Harvey Clam, initiating now.
Sorry, it's not popping up for me. One moment. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion fails. Three, four. The main motion is back on the table to appoint Jabri Poe.
Are there discussions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Man, I'm really disappointed by that last vote.
I need folks with real buy-in and skin in the game. Jabri's got that. So again, I'll be voting against the substitute for Dr. Clam, and I encourage us to vote and move on.
Vote on the substitute motion.
Yes, substitute motion to appoint Dr. Harvey Clam, initiating now. Sorry, it's not popping up for me. One moment. Okay.
Do you hear my language?
Yes. That's it. The main motion is back on the table to appoint Jabri Poe.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Man, I'm really disappointed by that last vote. I will be supporting Jabri. I understand Mr. Farady's sentiment with parents. I think parents absolutely need to be involved in the public schools. I would encourage people to go and watch the interview, because that was not the concerns that were brought forward in the line of questioning that determined decisions. And I... You're welcome to speak to that, Mr. Farady. That's not to be facetious, it's just to make a distinction of candidates. I'll be supporting Jabri. The value that I saw in his interview, and I mentioned this during the interview process, is I believe he seeks to bring a culture of honor. And I believe we can have valuable conversation. I don't know him personally. There are some other candidates. I know Mr. Jack Collins personally, I know the value that he brings to the table with Richmond connections. Again, I see that as a valuable asset to bring to the school board as we're looking at funding components. And I know that he works with a number of people in our community and a very diverse group of people, and does so very amicably. And I value that, and I think he brings those assets to the table. But I will be supporting Jabri in this motion, or Mr. Poe in this motion. I'm very saddened by the losing Dr. Clam on this one. And that's very contrary to my understanding of where everyone was at. So, we can move forward.
What's the mission?
Other comments.
We just missed a really good opportunity. But I'm going to be supporting Jabri. And the reason I'm going to be supporting Jabri is because he definitely improved from interview to interview. But he said something last year that no other school board candidate mentioned. And what he said last year that no other school board candidate mentioned, I want to remind him of, because I want him to get to work on it as soon as he gets on the school And that is, he works in IT in the city of Lynchburg. And he said, "Why aren't we consolidating information technology between Lynchburg City Schools and the city of Lynchburg? They're in the same building." Something I've been saying for two and a half years. And his experience gives him the opportunity to find these efficiencies that we need to save money, because the tax dollars that go to the school division, which I learned something very interesting about tonight that we'll be revealing in the operating budget vote, the tax dollars that flow into the school division ultimately come from, you know, through us. And it's a great opportunity, and I'm reminding him about that ability to consolidate departments. We're a small enough city that we can do that. And I'm asking him to actually take that on, what he said in his first interview, and start looking at consolidating departments for efficiencies between the city of Lynchburg and Lynchburg City Schools.
Mr. Dean.
I'm saddened too by the loss of the opportunity. But I am also going to support Mr. Poe. I am very hopeful that his technological experience will add to the school board. I know that that's important, and finding efficiencies is important. So in that measure, I'm happy to support. I can say that it was tough. We had so many good candidates, and it was tough to have to vote for one over another in a lot of cases. I didn't speak to a lot of the ones that I really liked, but that shouldn't be interpreted as they weren't really great candidates and very close to garnering my vote. Ultimately, we have to pick one, and we get to do it openly and transparently in front of all of y'all, so you get to see the sausage being made. And that's the way I like it. So I will be supporting Mr. Poe gladly, so.
Mr. Wild.
Thank you. I'll be supporting Mr. Poe as well. Some of my candidates were Sharon Simpson and April Watson, but I knew I didn't have the votes, so I'll support Mr. Poe. Thank you. There's some great, again, some amazing candidates for District 2.
Anyone else?
Before I initiate that, I'm sorry, Council of Missions, I should have said this at the top, but I did receive your statement of disclosure, saying that you were a member of a group of persons, that group being the spouses of teachers employed by Lynchburg City Schools, and that you're able to vote impartially. All right, initiating the vote now. We're racing.
She was initiating both.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Dr. Brenda Farmer for District 3.
And I'd like to second.
She just finished it. Okay.
The motion did pass first.
Okay.
I'd like to make a substitute motion for Ms. Gloria Preston.
Speak to your side.
Gloria Preston has served on the school board, I think, three years, I believe. She's a former principal, former administrator, she's worked in our school system. Since we do have a new superintendent coming in, we're going to need someone, and we're losing several school board members, we're going to need someone with that insight that knows our school system, has been there, has been a teacher, a principal, that has the heart of our children, that continues to volunteer in our school system. You need someone like her at the helm to support our new superintendent and to continue to guide our children. Thank you.
Mr. Farady. This is a hard one, because I disagree a lot with a number of votes that Ms. Preston has taken. However, I'm recognizing the fact that of a board of 11, the experience of the folks up there, the average is like maybe a year and a half or two years. We're losing a lot of tenure. And it's important to have, yes, difference of opinion, but more than anything else, I think there needs to be experience, those who like know how the position runs. And if we're losing a lot of that experience, I really think it's important that we maintain some of that, at least for the next three years. So that's why I'm supporting Ms. Preston in this vote.
Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Farady just articulated my reasons for supporting Dr. Harvey Clam. Slightly different, but albeit very similar. With Dr. Farmer, and I believe Ms. Preston is a lovely woman. We have sat next to each other in the joint meetings. I thoroughly enjoy her. But I would like to speak to Ms. Brenda Farmer. Ms. Brenda Farmer has the heart that this city needs. She has the ability to call out the golden people like nobody I've ever met, and at the same time whip you in the butt. And that kind of ability to have a level of accountability while also being genuinely kind and caring about the people around her, I think is invaluable. And she is so invested in this community. I disagree with her all the time. She is one of my favorite people in this city. I wholeheartedly support Dr. Brenda Farmer. And I hope you will as well. She's lovely.
Ms. Reed.
So, yeah, this one is a hard one, because I feel the same between what Ms. Timmer said and what Mr. Farady said. So I think there is definitely great value in having Ms. Preston stay because of her experience that we're losing otherwise with our outgoing members. And I think there's things that we could disagree with, both Dr. Farmer and Ms. Preston, certain things. But I think, we need to have Dr. Farmer as our, like, chamber chaplain. You know, she just needs to sit right here and just get us all in shape. I think that's what we should have her do. We're going to have a new position. She'd probably do great for that. But I think Ms. Preston has the administrative experience that has been talked about tonight, and she's already on the board. And I think that is necessary. I think her balance with now Nigel would be a great balance between the two, although I do love Dr. Farmer. So it's a challenge here, but I think that maybe having Ms. Preston stay would be good, because I think she's agreed with us on some of the pretty important things, and that she has had a difference in other things, but, you know, I think we have to look at the experience level at this point, too, as far as staying, having the continuity on the school board. But I don't know. They're both great.
Anyone else?
I'll be voting against the substitute motion.
I think Dr. Farmer's just a... Bring something different to the table. I mean, her interview, she interviewed us, right? And she is the type of intrusive leader that we need for kids in the school division. Because, just an example, if you put her on the discipline committee, guess what? She's going to get to the bottom of it and straighten it out. And that's the kind of person we need. And she cares deeply about the city. And it's nothing personal against Ms. Preston, but, I mean, it's just the energy that Dr. Farmer brings to it and the willingness and just, she's involved in so much, in everything she's plugged into, she goes 110%, right? I think it's a great opportunity for us to put her on there. I hope you'll... I hope that you will vote against the substitute motion, and I hope we'll put Dr. Farmer on the school board.
Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you care about truancy, and I know we all have said we do, Dr. Farmer, she was my assistant chief at the voting precinct at Liberty, and her interaction with the students up there, if they showed up without their IDs, I mean, she didn't cut any slack. She sent them back to their dorms to get that ID and come down there prepared to vote. And they loved her. They called her mama before it was over with. And I don't want to speak disparagingly of somebody who's served on the school board, but the truancy problem continues to get worse and worse, and the counties have figured it out. Everybody seems to figure it out how to get kids to stay in class, except Lynchburg. And if we can't get them in class, we're never going to succeed. It's impossible, okay? Everybody realizes, if you're not in class, it ain't going to work. If you're missing 30, 40, 50 school days a year, you're headed toward another type of system. Government system. And we've got to stop that school-to-prison pipeline. You've got to get them in class. Brenda Farmer will do it, no doubt. I've watched her perform that duty as my assistant chief, and I trust her to change. Again, we need to change what we're doing, what we're doing and working. We need somebody, a change agent, and Brenda Farmer, I believe, is that change agent.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just, so we're all on the same page, I would renew my substitute motion for Ms. Preston. Just so we're all clear about what we're going on.
Let's vote on the substitute motion for Ms. Preston.
Yes, sir. Initiating the vote now. The main motion is back on the table to appoint Dr. Brenda Farmer.
Let us vote.
One second, I'll record it.
Does that say?
Oh, that's right, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, I got it mixed up.
Okay. All right, initiating the vote now. This is for Dr. Brenda Farmer.
Dr. Farmer.
It's next to you.
It's bad, Steve.
Okay, I'm ready.
It's fine, it's fine, yes.
Okay.
Did it go?
Yes. The motion passes, 5-2.
Now we go to the budget.
Mr. Mayor, this brings us back to the budget?
Mm-hmm. Let's take a five-minute recess.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Five-minute recess.[1525.33] Five-minute recess. Yeah.
Mayor, I'm going to re-.
Welcome back, everyone.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to reconsider the appointment of Jerepo and to move that to the end of the meeting.
To the end of the meeting. We'll have a discussion. Yes, sir.
So I'm making the motion to reconsider at the end of the meeting.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
We'll speak to it.
I don't think we need to speak to it. We can, if we need to speak to it, I think there's probably a legitimate closed session. We can buy them by the end of the meeting to speak to it.
So it sounds like by consensus, maybe?
Yes.
To put it at the end of the meeting to address? No? Okay.
End of the meeting. By consensus.
There's not consensus.
There's not?
He said no.
He said no?
No.
You want to discuss it?
No, not at all. Take a second. I don't want to discuss it.
You don't want to discuss it? Let's vote, please.
The motion passes six-one.
Okay.
It'll be reconsidered at the end of the meeting.
Yes.
All right. Moving forward with the budget. Are we calling on?
Yes, sir. Mr. Feraldi.
Ms. Witt is coming up. There was some discussion at the work session. Man, my voice is getting tired. There was some discussion at the work session over this audit committee, staff member, and whatnot. I had a conversation offline with Ms. Timmer. And we didn't, full disclosure, and Ms. Timmer can certainly correct the record if I misstate anything. After we finished our conversation, we didn't really arrive at an agreement. I've been thinking throughout this evening about ways to find agreement. There is a desire to have a staffed position for this audit committee. Admittedly, I'm very wary of appropriating any new dollars for any new position at all right now on this budget. That's my position. I am willing to submit to a compromise if Ms. Timmer is willing to work with me on saying, all right, up to $100,000 from the reserve of contingency funds may be considered by this committee and then recommended to council for appropriation. If that ends up being a position, then you've got your one-time money to do it. That's something I can get on board with. But by doing it as $100,000, one time, which was your request, and it can still have come as a recommendation from that committee, then we would all fully understand what the purpose of those dollars would be. And if that's enough for a compromise, then I would certainly welcome that. But that is me going well beyond, I don't want to appropriate any dollars. So I'm willing to submit that as a negotiation.
Ms. Timmer?
Ms. Witt to present for? I think we should let Ms. Witt present.
Ms. Witt?
And I'm happy to speak to that in a moment.
Ms. Witt? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Well, thank you for your patience. Took a moment to make sure we got this right. And before we start walking through the packet of information that you have in front of you that considers all the ordinances and the votes, I just would like to quickly go through what was added back in the general fund budget at work session. Okay? So, and I just want to do this quickly if that is okay. So in the city manager's office, the data analyst position was added back. In community development, the short-term rental monitoring service and the zoning official position, because those go together, were added back. $100,000 for, well, then economic development, tourism, and museums. The Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance partnership funding was added back. In the fire department, the Pulse Point app was added back. Also in fire, the reduction to minor tools, equipment, and contractual services was added back. Also in fire, the training, training equipment and props and conferences was added back to the budget. Also in fire, the uniforms and apparel was added back to the budget. In the police department, the apparel and protective wear was added back. The reduction of investigation services was returned. Then the law enforcement supplies in the police department. In the library, the online cataloging was added back. In public works, the drop-off recycling sites. In social services, the court preparation and expert testimony fees. And in the component unit for GLTC, $250,000 was added back to GLTC. And also, the 3% COLA for city staff was reduced to 2.5% effective July 2nd, because that's aligned with the pay period. When we made all the reductions and rebalance, there was opportunity to go to 2.5. With discussion with city manager, we moved it to 2.5.
Yes, Mr. Feraldi?
On that part, what's the difference of a half a percent?
$267,000.
Okay. So a quarter of a penny.
Did we get the fund balance and the trash fees and?
Yes, yes. Those were taken from fund balance to one year of trash waiver of the $10 fee a month and then one year for the decal license fees.
So those are in?
Those are, yes.
In as in removed?
Yes. Yes. They were paid for out of fund balance and one-time funding.
Thank you.
Reducing the fund balance, the 11.8.
Mr. Wilder? Just so I'm clear, have we been given a list of items that might be eliminated? I just want to double-check on some of those. Is that the downtown library, is that eliminated?
It is still eliminated.
Thank you. The, let's see, what else? The naturalist center, the program?
It is eliminated.
The closing of Templeton Senior Center?
It is eliminated.
Okay. The Jackson Street, the Jackson Heights Art Studio?
That is eliminated.
I just want to go on record. You know, I'm trying to compromise as much as possible, but I hate to see those programs eliminated, especially the senior citizen center. And then Jackson Heights Center and the naturalist program and the closing of downtown library. That's the one on the corner of 12th and?
Yes, sir.
Wow. And they just renovated that. I hate to see those programs closed. I just want citizens to understand the impact when we cut the budget, what it does to our services. So all of our senior citizens that like to go to the Templeton Rec Center, your student is going to be closed. So I want to make sure we all understand that. Thank you.
So the top two sheets in the packet that you have, this represents all the adjustments that have been made to the general fund budget. So all those items, line by line, are on here that have been eliminated and the changes from the proposed budget to what is included in the ordinances before you.
Mr. Feraldi?
Ms. Witt? I would re pose my question, Ms. Timmer. I know that was a red firm line. So again, the concept would be we would take $100,000 out of the unassigned fund balance, align it with this audit committee, and then at the very least, we can make an informed decision on what this position would do, the costs therein. You can assign duties to it. You can suss it fully out, so you know what's there, as opposed to just saying we're going to appropriate it right now. So if you're willing to do that, I'm willing to support it and work with you to get that done. And that is the best I can do to get you the cash that you're talking about for that position over the next year.
Ms. Timmer?
Ms. Feraldi, something that's been great about today is that a number of us have had longer conversations than we've had for the entire six months of my term. I just wish they'd happened earlier because we're making major decisions on areas as a body where we've both acknowledged, this isn't a slight, this is just an acknowledgement across the board. There's been a challenge in building trust. And so I appreciate your coming to the table on this. And one of the things that we discussed in the work session was a compromise that I had brought to the mayor. There had been some discussions about it as far as a reduced rate from the 89 cents that is still above equalization, which I have vehemently supported equalization and I still support equalization because it is an increase in the city revenue from the previous fiscal year. The possibility of negotiating a reduced rate lower than where the general consensus of council has been at the 86 to 89 to 102.5 kind of range. And I understand that that's a shift with personal property tax. That's not to misrepresent Mr. Feraldi's plan, but it's a major increase in spending. In order to enact or bring to the table something that has been requested by many of our citizens, which is the audit committee, where there's an internal audit process, and I firmly believe that this is incredibly valuable. For one, local businesses have to adjust to market pressures. Government is not susceptible to those same pressures. And so because of that, there is unchecked growth that creates natural inefficiencies. It's not to say that there is ill motivation in any particular case. It's just to acknowledge the nature of the beast. And one of the things that I have learned as a freshman in this budget process is part of how our budget is approached. And a huge aspect of that approach is that various components are decided upon independent of each other rather than in connection as a whole. We see this largely in the CIP when it comes to, and I've used this example before, but Miller Park Pool. I am in support of keeping the pool open. I'm in support of trying to find ways to expand access for local citizens at the same or comparable rate. I am all for Miller Park Pool. In being all for Miller Park Pool, I actually built off an idea that was Mr. Feraldi's, and I'm coming back to your question. But Mr. Feraldi brought up in a work session. I thought it was an excellent idea. Why don't we explore public-private partnerships? We do this in other areas. There's value that can be added to the community and it can be a reduction of taxpayer burden. What's the opportunity there? Especially if there's opportunity to increase operations, increase that operational capacity for the pool. So I started exploring that. There's some viable options there, again, building off Mr. Feraldi's idea. But in the course of that exploration, what I also found is that what had been represented to us was not the full picture. And again, this isn't to attribute motivation, but it is to recognize a flaw in the process. And that is that certain components of what's brought are vetted to a place where council doesn't have all the information to make those decisions. So what was brought was that the pool had to be completely demoed and redone, and there was no and there was no opportunity for renovation. But what was represented to me as I started to explore, um, some of the vendors and their insight into the pool was that actually what had been presented to staff and what was possible was renovating that pool. And that it was a valuable structure that could still continue to serve the community. We could save on taxpayer dollars and still meet needs. And, the thing that we've all been agreeing on, and I love it when we have consensus, is we've got to get sixty million into our school CIP. We have to improve our school buildings. There are things that, that must be done, and we all agree on it. And those have to be priorities moving forward. And so, these other components, what I've learned in this budget process, again, as a freshman, is that there are these imaginings that are taking place with engineers and architects, where there's a, a big dollar amount put behind it, where it's the wish list. And then, they're conglomerated together and presented to us in a budget. And they're not balanced against each other, and they're not balanced against the nature of the current economy. Our citizens are struggling financially. They really are. I get the emails every day. And, in this turbulent economy, I think that we are being, I think we're being reckless in how we are considering the value of our citizenry. And I get that there are services that, that we want to provide to this community. But when we assume that increase in value in homes or the rate of inflation that takes place in these transactions is there for the government to spend on our individuals' behalf, it, we know it damages businesses. We saw this with the turnout with the lodging tax. This trend is unsustainable. It's an unsustainable trend. So, the, back to Mr. Feraldi's question, the, the compromise that has come to the table as a possibility as of today, again, because this can has been kicked down the road so much, is the audit committee with the question of an internal auditor that would help look for these efficiencies, look for technology integrations, look for opportunities where we can cut and, and move into greater places of efficiency for a compromised rate. And, to, I don't have a direct answer for you, Mr. Feraldi, because I'm still wrestling with trust. Not to point that at you directly, but just in communications that I've had with, with various members of this council, with the way that votes have been represented, where they would go, I, I don't, I don't know that the audit committee would be there in the way that, and I know you're trying to suss out these specifications, I get that. I'm struggling to believe that, that that would be real.
Mayor?
Mr. Feraldi.
I would recommend then that you appoint Ms. Timmer and myself to the committee to lead it up and start getting it to work.
I'll be the servant of that committee. I'm a footballer.
Oh, great.
Been there for ten years, F.P.S.E.
Even Mr. Wilder, in my place. I don't, doesn't matter to me. And in my opinion, I, if Ms. Timmer is willing to make a motion for the real estate wa, rate in conjunction with the appropriations I'm talking about right now for the committee, I'm willing to second it.
I, I, I can't hear what you're saying, but I, I'm not willing to make that motion, Mr. Feraldi.
Mayor? May I ask?
Yes.
Good question?
Yes.
Why? I, I don't want, in my opinion, I don't want to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars for a position right off the bat. I want to understand the position itself. I don't agree with the audit committee. We have an audit. I'm compromising on that. And then, I'm also saying I'll compromise on getting the dollars for the committee to hire somebody. And, you, you said in the work session and in our private conversation that you need dollars for someone to do this. So, I, I am compromising on that left and right. Why won't you, why won't you support it? Do you support eighty-four or not?
I do not support eighty-four.
Okay.
And, part of the reason that I don't support it, Mr. Feraldi, is because the nature of this conversation. And, no, let me speak to it. Let me speak to it.
The conversation we're having on public, in front of everyone?
Which, wonderful.
I'm, I'm perplexed. That's what you're seeing. I, I, I don't know what else I have to communicate. You said to the mayor that you support a compromised rate of eighty-four cents. You said it in the work session. And so, and now I'm-
Yeah, I didn't.
And now, I, all right, fine, whatever. You mentioned eighty-four in a conversation with the mayor. And so, eighty-three, excuse me.
Eighty-three.
Okay, eighty-three. Now, we have three point one million dollars worth of actual cuts to the city. And, I'm compromising on the audit committee and potential auditor that y'all want to hire. And now, you're wanting to back out? That's how I see it. That's why I'm confused. Help me understand where I'm missing here.
I would like to address the audit committee separately from the rate. And here's why. I do believe the audit committee stands on its own merits. I think that's where we need to go as a city. I have vehemently supported equalization. I have been talking about compromise today. I believe that trust needs to be further built. I understand that you're offering this olive branch in public. I'm concerned about the follow-through and the nature of our conversations. And I am working to come to the table, and I hope that these conversations can continue.
What do I need to do to alleviate those concerns for trust?
That's a discussion for off-camera, Mr. Feraldi.
Far from it, ma'am. Far from it. I want to know what I need to do to earn that trust. And I think the public deserves to see it too. You want, you want them separate? Which would you like to consider first?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
My stance, and it consistently has been, and I understand the nature of our discussions today. Again, I hope they continue. My stance is for equalization. I'm going to reiterate why. And then, I am going to speak to the value of the audit committee. With equalization, and I know we're looking at what city staff is presenting, but with equalization, we're still looking at government spending increasing around the rate of inflation. What was proposed in the city manager's budget was a sixteen point two percent increase on our real estate tax. That is a fact. It's not conjuncture. It's not propaganda, as was mentioned earlier. That is just a reality, and it is historic. How that would impact businesses and homeowners? I don't know specifically. I know it's significant. I know it's significant. It could affect hiring. It could affect growth. One of the things that I really value recently is the expansion of Genworth. And, that they are hiring a number of our local residents and bringing them on board. We need to protect that growth. We need to protect the growth that our citizens, or, sorry, not Genworth. I, I misspoke. Framatone. And Delta Star. I was thinking of Delta Star. But, yes, Framatone and Delta Star. Different conversation about Genworth happened recently. So, going back to that, the growth has to be protected. The growth that is being perpetuated and developed by our citizens is what has to be protected. And the way we protect that is by keeping a level of liquidity in the economy. I recently met with some small business owners that are having a very hard time with, um, with just business in Lynchburg. And, their ask to me was keep the taxes low so people have money to spend. So, I understand the nature of your questions, Mr. Feraldi. Quite frankly, I will happily have this discussion with you behind closed doors. I will. But I'm not going to have it here and now and, and play into that. And, Mr. Mayor, you know where I have stood consistently. And, you know where I will vote. You have your votes for eighty-three, eighty-four cents.
No, no, you don't. You don't know that.
And, fair enough. But also, you don't know where we're at with personal property tax. Because those discussions, again, those discussions haven't happened. There's been a total breakdown until today where it's being pushed in a public way. And, and it's frustrating.
I have a motion. I have a motion.
Have a motion.
Mr. Patrick. What does the car tax rate have to be set to effectively have us operate at eighty-four cents?
Eighty-four, eighty-nine cents minus eighty-four cents is a five-cent reduction. Five times seven oh nine is, uh, five times seven oh nine is three million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Each penny on the car tax, just the car tax, not the whole of personal property tax, is roughly fifty-five thousand dollars. So, if you divide three, four, five, four, oh, 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 by fifty-five thousand dollars, you get a sixty-four and a half cent reduction, call it sixty-five cent reduction, to the car tax. So, it would go from three dollars and eighty cents to three dollars and fifteen cents. So, at a tax rate of eighty-nine cents, and a car tax of three dollars and fifteen cents, down from three dollars and eighty cents, you would essentially provide the same level of tax reduction overall.
So, three fifteen. So, folks, here's what I'm prepared to do.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I have the floor.
Wait, he had the floor.
I have the floor. Um, so, here's what I'm prepared to do.
We're not in line with our agenda, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm talking about the budget.
No. The first item that we voted on to have on the agenda was the real estate tax.
No.
We did. We voted upstairs.
Mayor, I have the floor.
We absolutely voted upstairs. Either the agenda needs to be amended.
Mayor.
The agenda needs to be amended.
Mr. Feraldi had the floor.
Mr. Taylor, Mayor Taylor?
He had a rule on his point of order.
This is a point of order. We need to either amend the agenda-
You're so scared, aren't you?
No, I'm not scared of anything. We either need to amend the agenda and follow the agenda, or, not. I mean, it's, it's that simple. The, the vote that we made upstairs was to put the real estate tax rate first. That's it.
Mayor? May I please continue?
Hold on.
You got a rule on the point of order. The point of order is that the, we have to amend the agenda if we're going to change it.
And Mayor, I would submit that the motion we made upstairs was in conjunction with the committee, which has now been kicked to the side because we don't have agreement. So, now, we're moving on. That's what I submit.
There was never any agreement upstairs, actually.
Mayor?
This is what, this is what happens when we don't vote work.
Mayor, can I please continue without being interrupted?
So, it sounds like the point of order is related to the motion being germane.
Well, I haven't made a motion yet.
Right. I haven't heard the nature of the motion to be able to speak to it. So, unless it's related to the ordinances that are before council tonight, any amendment to an ordinance, if that's what it may be, would have to come back.
So, can I finish, please?
Hold on a second. Can you repeat what you just said?
So, I haven't heard the nature of the motion to determine if it's germane. It's only a, a, a beginning of a motion. I hereby move. So, what, what council has on it as it relates to its agenda is the ordinance for the, uh, real estate tax rate and the budget ordinances that city staff had passed out. So, I think the first thing we need to do is hear the motion to determine-
So, no, 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 no. The point of order.
The point of order is about what we voted on upstairs. We either did or we didn't.
Correct.
We voted on the first part of the agenda, we deal with the real estate tax rate. So, we either did that or we didn't do that, regardless of whatever his motion is.
That's the point of order.
You haven't heard my motion yet.
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
Yeah, he just-
Because you've already voted to deal with it the way we voted, which is to deal with the real estate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to set the real estate tax rate at equalization seventy-six point seven. Mr. Mayor, you just recognized me.
He's not-
He just recognized me. We have a motion and a second on the floor. That's in line with the agenda. We have a motion. We have a motion.
He had the floor.
We got a motion and a second, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, we got a motion and a second.
He had the floor.
You recognize me, Mr. Mayor. I said, "Mr. Mayor," and you recognize me.
You out of order.
You recognize me, Mr. Mayor.
No.
Mr. Feraldi was still speaking. I allow you to talk, but Mr. Feraldi had the floor.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. There's a motion and a second.
He's got a rule on his point of order.
You never ruled on my point of order, then you recognized me, and I put a motion on the floor to equalize the real estate tax rate.
Mr. Friedman, could you-
And we have a second.
Mr. Friedman.
We've got rules or we don't have rules.
Mr. Friedman.
Mayors, I understand that we need to hear the nature of the motion to determine if it's germane. So, that is your call. That is your call.
I will hear, I will hear Mr. Feraldi's motion.
Thank you.
But you never ruled on whether or not the, uh, real estate tax rate was what was up first. I don't answer to you.
It's not the way it works.
Greg?
Silence us, you can't.
How are you?
I wish I could.
Can you please finish what you were saying?
You can't silence us.
So, uh, mild case of dyslexia. A penny on the real estate tax is nine oh seven, not seven oh nine. So, when I redo the math, it's actually equal to an eighty-cent reduction rather than a sixty-five cent. So, the equivalent at eighty-four cents would be three dollars, not three dollars and fifteen cents.
Three dollars.
Apologies.
Thank you. So, my motion is that the agenda be amended and that council reduce the car tax to three dollars even. That is my motion.
That motion doesn't make sense. It's either we agen, we amend the agenda to consider a resolution-
And immediately consider and approve-
The combining motions.
We've done it before.
No, no, we're not combining motions.
We've done it before. You guys can argue all day long, just vote against it. We know you will. My motion is that we amend the agenda and immediately consider and pass a three-dollar car tax.
Mr. Mayor?
So moved.
This is a parliamentary gimmick and trip.
No, it's not a gimmick.
We amend the agenda or we consider the ordinance.
It's not a gimmick.
You got to get Mr. Feraldi in line.
So, I think what, uh, what council member Feraldi has proposed is acceptable, but with the caveat that the ordinance cannot be amended without having that paper ordinance in front of council. So, we've dealt with that issue before.
No, we don't.
It was on the agenda last night.
That was cancelled.
Well, not, not this evening. So, I, I think the way to fix it, though, is simply giving direction to staff to bring it back and adopt, you know, proceed with our budget ordinances as, as normal and just simply adopt a, uh, if, assuming the agenda's amended, adopt a motion directing staff to bring back what you're requesting at the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm good with it coming back at the next meeting.
We need to get a budget rate set.
Hold on, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, he's been talking for like twenty minutes.
Really? So, uh-
He's been talking the whole time, Mr. Mayor. You're letting him railroad you right now.
No, no.
Here you are.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
My motion would be that, I believe we have, so, we have to have a special meeting to adopt this, all right? I believe Monday night is on the table?
So, it requires two readings. The readings must be three days apart.
Not available Monday night.
For appropriations.
Appropriations. So-
You already made me miss once a meeting with my kids, Chris. Quit playing games.
Were they your kids or your wives?
What's that?
I move for Monday night special meeting.
I want him to repeat what he just said.
Were they your kids or your wives?
They're my kids and my wife's kids, Chris.
All right, point of order.
No, I want, I want you to deal with him right now, Mr. Mayor.
That was-
Chris. That was completely out of line.
All right.
Chris, don't, don't bring his family in.
Okay. I move that we have a special meeting Monday night for the second reading of the budget. And that incorporated in that is a three-dollar car tax.
I'm going to make-
That is my motion.
I'm going to make a substitute motion. Oh, there's no second?
I just said-
I'm going to make a substitute motion.
You going to make a substitute? What's your substitute motion?
A substitute motion is going to be that we change the time to s, ten AM. Let's do that.
Ten AM on Monday?
Does that work for you?
Well, I'd like to add a friendly amendment to this substitute motion. It's not a time. A three-dollar tax rate, or three-dollar car tax and eighty-four on the real estate.
Well, no, I mean, we're going to be setting the real estate rate here just a moment. So, I mean, I'm good with that, too, friendly amendment on that.
Not friendly.
I'll do, actually, I'll do, here's, here's, here's the substitute motion. The substitute motion will be the second reading of the budget will be what Mr. Faraldi said on the car tax. And eighty...
Eighty-four.
No. Eighty-two cents on the real estate.
Not friendly.
That's, well, it's my substitute motion. It's my substitute motion.
Okay.
Ju- just to be clear, if we reduce the car tax to three dollars and council wants to have sufficient funds to fund the budget that we talked about in the work session, and the real estate tax rate would need to remain at eighty-nine cents.
Mr. Mayor, the easiest way to do this, so, so, so my motion is for eighty-two cents on the real estate and what Mr. Faraldi said on the car tax, that would actually reduce the tax burden on our citizens even more by an additional one point eight million dollars below the manager's proposed, uh, or below equalization, actually. So this would be a tremendous amount of tax relief for our citizens. And that's my motion.
Ms. Reed.
Um, so, Mr. Patrick, if that happened, if we went to eighty-two cents on the real estate rate and lowered the car tax, how many millions of dollars would come off of what is proposed here?
Many. I mean, I think five or more. I'd, I'd have to do the, I'd, I'd have to, if you give us a few minutes to do the math.
Right, so...
But we, it, it would, wherever we landed, it would look nothing like what we discussed at the process.
Right, so I just need to make something clear. The mayor gets a call or a...
Are we speaking to the motion?
A, a visit, um...
Just trying to figure out where we're at.
Yeah, I'm just speaking.
Speaking to the motion.
Yeah, that, uh, an olive branch or an effort was made yesterday by Ms. Timmer to the mayor at eighty-three cents. Whenever. And then, so, so the mayor's thinking eighty-three cents. He actually asked the staff to get together an eighty-three cent budget for today, which they did, eighty-six and eighty-three, 'cause he was saying eighty-six up until, I think, yesterday, and then eighty-three based on what he was told by Ms. Timmer, thinking that maybe that's where we could all go. So then we have a presentation today at eighty-six and eighty-three, based on that conversation, from what I understand. So they worked, I'm speaking. So our staff does that at the mayor's request, thinking, okay, maybe we're gonna be able to come together and compromise and get something actually done. So they work and they present it, and then we have this discussion upstairs where it's like, oh my gosh, we're all coming together and we're so grateful that we're finally having this conversation. And it sounds like we're actually gonna get something done, and everybody's coming together and we're walking through and we're adding things back in until Mr. Mission flips his magic flipboard over there and is showing, no, as a matter of fact, he's not gonna participate in it, and he's like, "I'm never gonna add, I'm not gonna be part of this," even though he's sitting here telling us, "Oh, well, give us the car ta- the car, um, trash credit back." And, and, um, "I want everything in for the fire department." So he's making it sound like he's coming together with, with everybody, and he's asking for things and taking things away and all the things, and then his magic flipboard, um, showing this increasing taxes. I'm speaking and... And then... It's not intentions, it's right in front of us. And all the while, it's games. We're being accused of not being trustworthy. We're being accused of not being trusted, and efforts to negotiate prior to coming in here were being made by Ms. Timmer with Mr. Faraldi about a rate and an auditor, and then now you're going back to equalization when you yourself came to the mayor and said eighty-three. So what are we doing? And so now it's completely off the table. We're all trying to make something work, and we're being accused of not being trusted when we're trying to get something done. Wasting time. They bust their butts between meetings to get this down here based on what was done upstairs because of things y'all said. Talk about fraud, waste, and abuse. This staff has been abused for three months because of this budget process. If people understood in this city how they've been treated, you would be shocked. Shocked. It's disgusting how they've been treated by people on this council. I don't wanna see anything that you have to say about our rules of procedure 'cause you should have hundred percent stepped in for how they've been treated.
Mr. Mayor.
And you haven't. I don't wanna see anything. And we need to come to an agreement on a, on a rate tonight because of the work that they've put in. And everything upstairs was misleading. It's a game.
It's not a game.
It is a game.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my substitute motion.
Yes.
Right, so I'm just gonna withdraw my substitute motion, then I'm gonna reintroduce a substitute motion at eighty-four and thirty. Or eighty-four and three dollars, excuse me, eighty-four cents and three dollars.
Is, is that what, that's what I was gonna ask you?
That, that was my friendly amendment that I offered to the substitute motion.
Eighty-four and three.
And thirty. Uh, but I, I need to be able to speak.
We can't do it.
Okay, well, then vote against it.
So, so that, that's equivalent of a seventy-some-ten real estate tax rate. So, so if you, if, um, if, uh, this budget that we thought was supported when we had the work session requires the current car tax rate, three dollars and eighty cents, and an eighty-four cent real estate tax, or an eighty-nine cent real estate tax and a three dollar car tax. That, that's what it takes to get this budget. But you can't do the lower car tax and the lower real estate tax and get this budget. We would have to, we would have to find four and a half million dollars of cuts to do three dollars on the car tax and four and a half, and eighty-four on the real estate tax, of additional deductions.
So we need the car tax to remain at three ninety?
Three eighty.
Three eighty.
And, and an eighty-four cent real estate tax.
And eighty-four cent.
Or an eighty-nine cent real estate tax and a three dollar car tax, and it's council's decision as to what type of tax relief is more beneficial. Car tax or real estate tax?
Okay.
We have a substitute motion with a second.
What was the substitute motion?
It's eighty-four cents, and was it three dollars, I think, is that right? Eighty-four cents and three dollars. Sure.
Yes, read it back.
Um, to hold a special meeting Monday at ten AM to conduct a second reading, consider an ordinance reducing car tax to three dollars and setting the real estate rate to eighty-four.
No. That, for the substitute?
Yeah, that's the substitute.
Substitute, that is correct, yes.
But to get where we need to be, we need to be at eighty-four and three eighty.
Or eighty-nine and three dollars.
What was the, what was the first motion?
Mayor? My intent here is to lower the car tax to three and then adopt this.
But they don't need to vote on the rate to do that, because it remains what it is.
Exactly. So my initial motion was to call it in at three dollars on the car tax.
And eighty-nine.
And we would vote on all of that on Monday on the second reading. That was my initial motion, then you had the, the substitute, which I'll be opposing the substitute.
Mr. Faraldi.
So your motion is for the eighty-nine cents?
My motion is for the three dollar car tax.
Three dollar car tax.
The rate's already eighty-nine cents, so, so it doesn't need to be voted on if it's not going to be changed.
Okay. Mercy. Call him again.
Mayor, I...
Mr. Don.
Yes, sir.
We need to let them speak to their own motions.
Yeah, we have a substitute motion here.
So you, you had a substitute motion on the floor?
I've got the substitute motion on the floor.
Let me speak, Marty.
Um, so this budget that's presented to us is, got two-hundred-and-forty-nine million, six-hundred-and-thirty-sixty-three thousand dollars in expenditures in it, right? Last year, the budget we adopted was two-hundred-and-thirty-five million, six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in expenditures. That's fourteen million dollars in new spending. New spending, okay? Um, I get it, right? And what this comes down to is very simple. We gotta rein into spending. I'm not gonna burden the citizens of our city. And this substitute motion, what it does is it actually creates a revenue-neutral budget where we'd still have the same two-hundred-and-thirty-five million and six-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand-ish as, as last year. That's the goal, is to, is, it's probably actually a little more than that 'cause we got the natural growth in there. But it should reduce, um, spending by about eleven point two million dollars, which is what the, uh, what's the new real estate revenue spending. This is a historic tax increase, right? Earlier in the work session, Chris Faraldi tried to make some kind of claim that there was a ten million dollar, uh, tax increase that happened around the time that, that he came on board. And I'm just gonna give you the numbers that are right out of the budget, it's, it's on the city's website. In two thousand fifteen, there was a six-hundred-and-nineteen, six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar tax increase. In two thousand sixteen, there was an eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollar tax increase. In two thousand seventeen, there was a nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollar tax increase. In two thousand eighteen, there was a five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollar tax increase, and this is real estate tax increases, right? And, uh, two thousand twenty, there was a three million, five thousand dollar real estate tax increase. In two thousand twenty-one, there was a one point six million dollar real estate tax increase. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a four point eight million dollar real estate tax increase. In two thousand twenty-three, there was a one point two million dollar tax increase. And guess what? In that November, the city elected Republicans to put an end to the madness of the spend, tax and spend policies that put government and the pipe dreams of bureaucrats ahead of the citizens' wallets. That's what happened. And then we had a one point nine million dollar reduction in real estate revenue. Right? Then last year, we had two point three million more real estate revenue on that reduced rate. So I wanna point out, for technical accuracy, that the even years would be the tax increase, the odd years would be new revenue from the growth. But what's presented right here? What's presented before us today? Eighty-nine cents is eleven point two million dollars. Not even close. I was told this was wrong, it's not wrong. Five point seven five million, that's inflation adjusted using Federal Reserve data, CPIU. If there's something else somebody votes to use, I'll use something else. That's the largest present value real estate tax increase in the last decade. This is where eighty-nine cents is. Guess what? This goes against everything about the core of me. This goes against every reason that six of us were elected up here, well, maybe five. And I'm not gonna do that because I told the citizens when I came here that I was gonna support smarter spending, not bloated spending, not exorbitant spending, not spending on amphitheaters, not spending on reimagined municipal projects, not spending on moving the municipal complex and the courts up next to the police department headquarters. Right? Not supporting any of those kinds of projects. And, um, fourteen million in new spending? Nope, we gotta put our citizens first, we gotta put your wallets first. And I asked this question before, and nobody on this city council has answered it. And the question that I have is, if we're gonna raise the taxes on our citizens, where are you gonna tell our citizens to cut back on their spending? It's that simple. I'm not gonna tell the citizens to cut back on their spending. I'm not gonna support any new spending. That's the purpose of my substitute motion.
Yes, uh, Mr. Faraldi.
No, actually, Ms. Timmer has a second to my substitute, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do your second.
I actually didn't realize I seconded, I thought Kurt did and I did the friendly, friendly amendment, but I'll, I'll speak to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate the acknowledgement. Thank y'all for sticking with us. I've supported equalization from the beginning, and I've supported it consistently for the reasons that I stated. In the work session today, and again, previously in talking with the mayor, we discussed what some possible negotiations and compromises could look like. I recognize that I am withdrawing a component of that largely because of the discussions and the nature of the discussions that we've had. And how those discussions have been grossly misrepresented. Mr. Mayor, I'd love to speak to you, um, about the nature of that. But, um, I will reserve that for a direct conversation. Going back to equalization, it is revenue increase from the previous fiscal year. It is a decrease in the proposed increase. There are opportunities here, and I think we need to do it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Faraldi.
I'll be voting against the substitute motion, and I hope that we can vote and move to the next.
Mr. Deema.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here I am again, you know, I'm... I wanted to do seventy-six point seven equalization. Been trying to do it multiple times, over and over again. I was assured that we would get the opportunity to set that rate free of any encumbrances or any last-minute games again, but here we are, back playing shell games with car taxes and real estate. I, I appreciate that this is an effort to equalize in a different sort of way, I get it. I've attempted to bring this motion forward on, last count, about twelve occasions because I believe that equalization reflects fiscal responsibility and genuine compromise, and I was compromising. When I was on the trail, uh, campaigning, overwhelming message I heard from citizens across party lines, Republicans and Democrats, was simple, they wanted a lower tax rate. Eighty-three isn't it, eighty-four isn't it, eighty-nine definitely a dollar, that's definitely not it. I mean, it was tyrannical where we were headed, and here we are, trying to figure it out. My original proposal that I put forward in the motion was seventy-five cents, and that reflected the, the public's input to me. That's what they wanted, lower than equalization, and other people spoke highly of that at one point. I don't know where that went. But in the spirit of compromise and good governance, I did, uh, try to, to come back to the equalization rate, which raises it for some, lowers it for others, but keeps what city gets equal. Let's be really clear about this, uh, you know, the, the, the equalization rate does not defund critical programs, no matter what you're hearing from the corner over here. It's not. They're getting the same amount of money and probably more, we keep talking about it. Same amount of money or probably more, so if you, you got a salary and you're making thirty thousand dollars a year, and next year you wanna equalize and get thirty thousand dollars, uh, a year, if you can't pay your bills, your bills went up. And they, they... I know there's some bills that go up. I get it. But they're gonna get more money, and we can address it if the bills go up more. But I, I have to tell you that this rate does not cut city services. I don't, I don't believe that for a second. I don't think it defunds critical programs, no matter how many times the folks tell me that it does. Uh, it simply keeps the city from profiting off of reassessments because that's the game that's played. Your value, your house went up, sneaky tax increase. I don't want the city to profit off of that sneaky tax increase. And so that's why I've been equalization, 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 equalization till the day I die, and I'm gonna stick with the equalization. And it may not get us what we want, this may be another way to get to something that's revenue-neutral, I get it. But, uh, you know, profiting off of reassessments, the city shouldn't be doing that. This is gonna, the equalization would have provided real relief to homeowners, especially those on fixed incomes that we say we care about. We've heard it over and over again, it's gonna hurt 'em, it's gonna hurt 'em, it's gonna hurt 'em. But why, why did we get a budget this big? And it's because the staff proposed increases. We're not proposing cuts, we're just saying, "Don't increase it like this crazy thing." And if I printed out all the budget requests that I finally did get, it'd be another three notebooks full. Why is this the way we do business? Why is this how it's happening? I, uh, I just humbly say that we need to remember the forgotten taxpayer. I know I'm way overvoted probably, but, uh... I know I'm way overvoted probably, but, uh, in humility, I would love to see us get back to, to equalization again so we don't play this game next year and the year after and the year after. Because this process is broken. If you can't realize this process is broken, you're not paying attention. So I didn't come here to, to grow the size of government. Um, I don't think government needs to, to grow. Eighty-three cents is a growth. Eighty-six cents is a growth. Eighty-nine cents is a horrible growth. So, you know, I'm not going to hide where I stand. I've stood in the same place the whole time, from the beginning.
Thank you. Ms. Reed.
Just a reminder from our work session earlier to everybody out there who's still with us watching and for who's still in here. An equalization rate, um, what it will require for us to do that, and I'm assuming with this substitute motion, if we're getting back down in the seventies for the tax rate, just so everybody understands. We will be, um, let's see, losing thirty-two positions, sixteen which are currently filled within the city department, which would be, um, I guess, effective immediately or within the next week unless we have some type of severance we can give or delayed process. Let's see. Also, it would eliminate the three percent cost of living adjustment to include the public safety progression plan, sworn police and fire. It would also reduce funding for the schools, the three percent increase for L, L, LCS. And then it would include all of the department cuts that were from the eighty-six cents point all the way down to seventy-six, which was including cuts within social services, Public Works, police, the sheriff's department, juvenile services, the library closes, Parks and Rec has cuts, community development, the city manager's office, the assessor's office, the city attorney's office, economic development, treasurer's office, um, the list goes on. So magistrate's office, court services, economic development, clerk and city council, um, all the way up to the circuit court, court clerk's office and circuit court judge's office. So that is the nine point three million dollars that will be cut from the city departments to get to seventy-six. Those are the cuts we've, and they are. They are removing services or essential things that we need to operate the city with and positions, people. People. And the non-negotiables many of us have talked about, which are our public safety and our schools. So it's significant and essential. So it's, again, where we've been talking about trying to find some type of balance while we're still trying to hear our citizens' concerns about a, a tax rate that is, is helpful, but some of these things will be harmful as well for things that we rely on in our city. Rely on. Sixteen, sixteen jobs is significant. No, and, and whoever's saying, I rely on, no. Many of us rely on. Many people rely on. Eighty thousand people, to be exact, rely on a lot of these services and people. When you call nine-one-one, you rely on them. So just to be, to remind everybody what we saw in the work session, we, was, was shown on the screen for us all to take a look at, and that's what we're looking at at the substitute motion or at equalization. If, um, just need to keep it in mind.
Mr. Wilder, Mr. Wilder.
She's had her hand up for a while.
But, but Mr. Wilder hadn't spoken that much. Everybody else had had a chance to speak. Mr. Wilder.
Yeah, thank you. Real, real quick, I do not support the substitute motion. And you mentioned about a broken process. I do want to thank Mary Jane Dolan, Randy Nelson, Trenae Tweedy, Bo Wright, and Turner Perel. I've been on the city council for nine years. I served on the school board for nine years. I have never been through a budget process like this, so a process has worked. I don't know what's happening with this council, but I just want to thank my former colleagues on not having to go through this process. There's no way I could have done this for nine years until now, but it's a bit amazing. But thank you.
Ms. Timmer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick on budget process, and then also I'd like to offer a, um, another friendly amendment to the substitute motion, uh, that the car tax would be put at two point nine five. Um, oh, oh, I'm messing up my numbers. Yep, two point nine five and real estate at eighty-three because, because I have been supporting, um, essentially non-growth, a non-growth in the budget from the previous fiscal year. There's still going to be growth in various areas. Again, we've talked about this in the nature of equalization, but a revenue-neutral budget. Regarding budget process, this, this has been a grueling process. I absolutely agree with Dr. Wilder. Part of the grueling nature of that process, I believe, is lack of access directly to department heads. Previous councils had department heads come before council and present their budgetary needs, and council deliberated on that in a very open process and an ongoing process for a number of months. In addition to that, there was the ability to negotiate specific line items. So those line items were brought to council, and then there was discussion about how that would reconcile within the budget. There have been efforts, as has been discussed, to look at what an equalized rate may or may not mean. We didn't receive that until today. There was a PowerPoint previously, but how that was presented in a budget context, did not receive that until today, which is the first reading of the budget. So I absolutely agree that this has been a grueling budget process. I am well aware that we're going to have to make decisions as a city, but I believe we have to prioritize our citizens and recognize the fact that when we're looking toward a revenue-neutral budget, when we're looking toward equalization, when we're looking towards these various rates, there is a level of built-in growth, and we need to trust our citizens to grow the local economy rather than the government, again, to assume those resources are its own to grow government. So that is the nature of my stance. I hope that we can amend the budget process to look more familiar to what it did in the past and to have those types of discussions because I think it'd be really valuable. But I, I believe it's in the process. I believe it's in the process. And again, that's the nature of why I'm so, such an advocate for rule changes because I believe we need to change this process in order to facilitate the discussions. And I do believe, again, that each member of council, Ms. Reed's heart, Mr. Ferardi's creativity, Dr. Wilder's investment, so much investment. And I, I love being on CDAC with you. He knows how to run a meeting. So again, there is talent across the board here and the ability to do it, but right now we lack the leadership in the process, and that's not a reflection of you. That's just the nature of the beast right now with the relationship between staff and council, and I think we can get there. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may say something very humbly. Marty, I wronged you and your wife, and I'm sorry. I should not have done that, and it won't happen again.
You crossed the line.
And I apologize.
No, I'm, I'm, no, this, you're apologizing to me. I accept your apology, but you crossed, no, don't speak to me. You crossed, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to finish this. You crossed the line, Chris. Don't ever mention my children or my wife. Don't ever let them come out of your mouth again. You voted to take money from me for lies, pretextual censure set up by Mr. Friedman. No, I'm not done. I'm not done. And I don't want to do the same to you. You're the most dishonest person I've ever met in my life.
Okay.
Let's get back to. Let's get back to the meeting.
Back to the meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, can we vote? We've all spoken.
Yes, let's, let's vote. Everybody's spoken. We, we, we just drove this thing into the ground.
Okay, clarify the motion one more time. To hold special meeting Monday at ten AM to conduct a second reading and consider an ordinance reducing car tax to two point nine five and set the real estate rate to eighty-three.
I point a clarification. Point clarification on this. So we're still going to walk through all these ordinances tonight, right?
Yes, I think we would.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure that we have to vote on these ordinances one by one. Enough with these games, with this combining stuff. I am asking you, Mr. Mayor, if you want to get a budget passed, we need to go through these ordinances one by one.
Sure. Well, let's do it.
All right, let's vote on this. Let's go through the ordinances one by one.
What? This is the substitute motion.
And whoever suggests this.
Yes.
It's revenue neutral.
Miss James.
Revenue neutral.
The substitute motion is eighty-three, two fifty.
Two ninety-five.
Two point nine five for the car tax and eighty-three for the real estate.
And Mr. Patrick, you said this would be the equivalent of what?
I think it's less than the equalization app, so we'll need to fund more than five million dollars in additional reductions.
All right. Initiating the vote now. Let's find out what your, what your devices are.
Mine didn't come up. Mine not coming up either.
All right, let me reset the vote. All right, initiating.
Oops, mine, it came and went away.
Oh, no, it went, it came through. I got yours.
I renew my motion.
Which is?
What was your motion?
That at the special meeting, a special meeting on Monday, ten AM.
Ten AM is fine with me.
Ten AM. With an ordinance to set the car tax at three dollars. And second reading, all the budget.
And the real estate rate?
My motion is what I stated.
So nothing on the real estate rate?
Nothing on the real estate. It stays, it will stay at eighty-nine.
No, that's not, no, no, that's not. That's not what that means.
It's not what it mean?
That's not what that means.
I've stated my motion.
Point, point of, uh, point of order.
Point of clarification you wanted.
It may be a clarification, but I need to understand, we're supposed to read the budget tonight. Have we met that obligation?
We're, we're going out to, we're trying to.
Figure out where you all want to go with, uh, at least the tax rates before we start doing that. Well, though, there isn't, as, as Mr. Patrick has said before, the eighty-nine cents that's on council's books is continuing in nature, okay? So council, should it not want to, doesn't have to address that. So adopting a budget as part of it to appropriate those revenues connected, connected to ongoing revenue related to current ordinances, doesn't need to be addressed if council doesn't want to do it, but it sounds like there's direction to, at least a motion to do a direction for a, a three-dollar car tax rate.
So if we don't address the real estate tax rate tonight?
Stays the same.
By midnight, it will stay eighty-nine cents?
No, 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 no.
Well, it would, it would stay until you all changed it.
If this is our last chance to change it, right?
No.
Is this the last chance to change it?
No, you could change it if you wanted at those special meetings.
It's, um, that ordinance is in front of us. So this, this is just specific to the car tax.
I understand.
I've made my motion, and I support it.
You have a second?
It has been, yeah.
Okay, let's vote.
All right, initiating the vote now.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, as we, as the first order of business that we were supposed to do that we addressed up there was setting the real estate tax rate, and ordinance was provided to us when we sat down here. And I would like to make a motion to set the real estate tax rate at equalization seventy-six point seven.
Second.
Outstanding.
You want to speak to your second?
Nope.
You want to speak to your motion?
We've got to stop taking, uh, taking more money from our citizens. It's, um.
Okay, let's vote.
I, I, I'm, I'm still speaking, Mr. Mayor. You know, th, th, this whole budget process, if I were to give it a grade, it's an F. It's an F. I mean, the games that are being played here, we've got citizens that come here all the time, and they're hanging out watching to wait and see what happens. It's just getting pushed and pushed and pushed. You know what the deal is? This budget contains, what did I say, fourteen million in new spending? Fourteen million in new spending? That is a, I think it's over a five percent increase. Um, oh, I got it right here. Five point six percent increase in spending. You know, that's way beyond inflation. So can't support it. That's why I got to support this equalized tax rate, and I hope it, uh, I hope it passes.
Anybody else?
Mr. Wilder? This is changing so fast. I do not support the motion. When we talked about the reduction of the car tax, in order to keep the, the, I would be had on the budget, even though it was a big reduction, we had to keep it at eighty-nine cents. So I do not support the motion. Even the eighty-nine cents is cutting certain services like the Templeton, excuse me, the Templeton Senior Citizen Center, the Jackson Heights Center. I'm disclosing so many resources that our citizens rely upon, our senior citizens rely upon, on, our War II citizens rely upon. So it's cutting so many services, things that Parks and Rec, the Nature Center, so many things that our children rely upon. So it's affecting our children, our senior citizens greatly. So I do not support the motion. I mean, the motion, the other one for eighty-nine cents was hard enough. This, I definitely can't support this motion. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Timmer?
Thanks. I think I share the confusion across the dais just in the nature of the conversations that we've been having, and I recognize, again, that we've talked about potential ways to come to the table and negotiation. I support an equalized budget. I support equalization in spending. Mr. Ferardi, I'm not quite sure the nature of your second, but I hope it is to move in that direction. So thank you for seconding the motion, and I hope that we can move in the direction towards a budget that grows around the rate of inflation, which is essentially what equalization would have done, a, a more revenue-neutral approach, approach where, again, from the previous fiscal year, the budget's growing around the rate of inflation. I hope that's the stance that you're taking in the nature of your second. Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
I, again, I thought we were coming to a place of compromise earlier today and, um, in the work session, and again, very misleading conversations, and that was, that, talk about disappointment, that was disappointing. So no, I cannot support equalization when, again, I thought the conversation earlier was that we were going to try to come up a little bit at least and, and, um, work together, and that clearly did not happen, and there were just too, too many essential things that had to come off the budget that are, you know, our promises that we made too, um, that I just, I can't, I can't support it coming off of the budget. So I, for that reason, I can't support this. I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can we vote?
We have a lot to get through.
Yes, let, we're going to vote.
To set the real estate rate to equalization.
To set the real estate, uh, rate to equalization. Initiating the vote now. The motion fails three-four.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move adoption of item A under section seven, which is consideration of adopting an ordinance increasing the water, sewer, and stormwater rates. It is page one in your packet.
Page one.
And again, this is, uh, item seven A on our agenda, but in our packet in front of us, it is page one.
To prepare, the packet is the second page one.
Oh, wow.
Another page.
Sorry.
The real estate rate is eighty-nine cents right now.
Yes.
Unless you or somebody else makes a motion for another rate, the real estate rate remains at eighty-nine cents. Cool.
Do I have a second?
Somebody's gotta do it.
Do I have a second?
For what? Oh, second.
Consideration of adopting an ordinance for increasing this water su, water, sewer and stormwater rates. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Second.
The motion is second. So we need discussion.
In the discussion. Ms. Donald?
The changes that are represented in the proposed document, there has been no changes to it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wild?
You ready for the vote?
Yes.
All right, initiating the vote now. The motion passes four-three.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move consideration of an ordinance appropriating the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six general fund operating budget excluding discretionary external service providers and school operating budget. And that would be on page with no number.
Just the next one?
It's the next one in your packet.
And I, I would so move.
Oh, twenty-five.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I speak to my motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. This has been, yes, a very lengthy process. Folks, this is one of the most, um... When we have an opportunity here, the ten-dollar trash fee is still gone. The thirty-five-dollar-ish car tag fee, gone. Three point one million dollars in spending cuts, check. In addition, two point five million for teacher compensation.
Two point seven.
Two point seven, thank you, Donna. For teacher compensation, check. Step pay increase for public safety, check. Those were the bulk of my non-negotiables and what I campaigned for. It also will incorporate, come Monday, the largest reduction in the personal property tax the city has seen in decades. And I know the real savings that that will help folks with. Now, some of these folks on this dais are gonna say, you are blowing the size of government way out of proportion. Folks, this is an increase associated with cops, teachers, and firefighters, and I'm gonna look the camera straight through. If anyone wants to vote against me in any election for supporting teachers, firefighters, and cops, I don't even want your vote. Vote for the other guy. I stand by this. And I don't care what party says anything about it. This isn't Republican or Democrat. This is something that every Lynchburger could get behind. And I will happily pay whatever it takes to make sure our teachers, firefighters, and cops especially are covered. I couldn't be more enthusiastic about this. Now, there's a trade-off here. There are some positions that are gonna be cut. I don't like that. I made it clear in our work session, I wanted three months at least of severance pay. It was reference seven. Give 'em eight. Whatever can be done on that, I want those folks taken care of. Better yet, I hope that we can take their applications first for other jobs in the city that are open, if they meet those qualifications. This is a hard time, yes, no doubt. But on every major issue, this honors my commitments that I campaigned for all through last year. Let's go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Miss?
I'd like to make a, uh, substitute motion to adopt the public safety budget at fifty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and judicial administration at seven million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. Because what that, that will do is fully fund the requests of our public safety and criminal justice system um, that were actually defunded in this budget by about six hundred and some, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly. So I'm gonna make a motion to, a substitute motion to separately fund public safety and judicial administration, fully funded as, as in the original proposed budget.
Is there a second?
Sorry, I was actually really distracted.
So...
As long as it's public safety fully funded, then I'm for it.
But, may...
There's a second, is that a second? So it's the, it's the original requested?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Timmer. So, yeah, so, so the, so the substitute motion is to fully fund the fifty-eight million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, six twenty-seven that was in the original proposed budget, that binder for all of public safety. That's police, fire, and telecommunications. Um, what was presented to us was fifty-eight, two forty-six, eight eighty-three. That is a roughly, it's a little, uh, I got that wrong, not six, about four hundred thousand difference, four hundred thousand less for public safety is what was presented to us on this ordinance. I can't support that. We need to fully fund public safety. And then judicial administration, that was, um, reduced by about fifty thousand dollars. So I'm making a motion to, um, fully fund those two portions of our budget. And just to be clear, that, I, I know that Mr. Faraldi said that this was about teachers as well. This portion is not about teachers. The schools' operating budget is actually a separate ordinance.
Fair enough.
Um, so I wanna make sure that we're fully funding our public safety and criminal justice system. I think that's absolutely critical. So that's why I make that as a substitute motion.
I second.
Second. You want to speak to your second?
I agree with it. I, I think we need to, I think we need to have that as a priority. I agree with it.
Okay. Well, let's vote.
All right, this is for a substitute motion to, uh, fully fund public safety and judicial administration at the original request. And initiating now. One second, I'm sorry. It's not showing up at the, there it is. Motion passes five-two.
Can I, can I understand about what the motion is now?
So, so, so this motion is specifically just to appropriate the funds for the public safety and judicial administration at the original twenty-twenty-six request and the operating budget of the general fund expenditures as shown on the ordinance.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that what's in here?
Uh, no, I believe that we will now need to find an additional, I, I haven't done the math, uh, five hundred thousand dollars plus in reductions in other areas.
Well, the substitute motion is the main motion, right?
Substitute motion is the main motion to fully fund public safety and criminal, and, uh, criminal justice.
Mayor? I'm gonna be voting no in passing the budget that is in front of me tonight. And I'll renew that motion once this motion fails.
So just to be clear, this is to fully fund public safety and fully fund our criminal justice system. That's what this motion is for.
Okay.
At the original request.
At the original requests.
Mayor, may I ask another question?
Yes.
So we need to find another five hundred thousand dollars.
I, I haven't done the math yet, but it, it, based on what I heard, it's five to six hundred thousand.
So we want to send folks on conference trips? That, that, this is the stuff it includes. It's the full fire departments, the full, all that, right? So we're gonna...
No. This is the public safety analyst position, this is...
Training equipment props and conferences. And then I'm also seeing third-party assistance with promotional process. I'm seeing reduced minor tools, equipment, contractual services, reduce uniforms apparel that is not PPE, personal, private, I mean like...
I think we'd have to work through that, but any items that we showed as reductions would come back.
What I'm trying to understand is, we're talking about sending folks to conferences and giving them better T-shirts that are not required. Right?
No.
That's my understanding, because we're talking about the fully funded fire, police, and judicial.
It, it's the items on that list that would be reductions that were not added back.
Correct, so some public safety positions on that list.
Marty!
Judicial includes courts.
Courts.
So it would be all the items on this list that were not added back for courts also.
Yeah, I understand. So now we're talking about sending folks to conferences when we're talking about cutting, right? That's what we're talking about here?
No, there was a lot more than...
Marty! Uh, judicial.
Mr. Mayor?
This.
I have the floor. And I'm trying to understand it. That's why I voted against it, because last-minute shenanigans.
Six hundred and thirty-three thousand, ninety-seven dollars.
So nearly another cent that we have to figure out.
We just voted on this motion.
It's, it's a substitute.
This, this is now the main motion.
Right.
Okay, let's go back to the main motion.
That, that is the main motion.
This is the main motion. The main motion is to fully fund public safety and judicial administration, or, or public safety and criminal justice system. So the main motion is to fully fund that as requested and, um, manager proposed in the budget, fully fund. So no reduction at all, no defunding the police, no defunding the fire department, no defunding the courts, no defunding our Commonwealth attorney.
I, I, can I please?
Speak, Chris.
Thank you. What I'm trying to say is, I don't think it's appropriate in this economy and this environment to be sending folks on more conferences. I don't think it's appropriate to be buying them fancy T-shirts. That's not defunding police and fire. That's baloney. We're spending taxpayer dollars and saying, we gotta pinch pennies, but then it's okay to send folks on conferences. If this is what happened in the fire department to Captain Missions, maybe I should be going to the fire department. If we're talking about, um, a hundred dollars for increased legal ser, legal services to the judicial system, if we're talking about reduced equipment and non-real property rent, if we're talking about reduced telephone services, those are all things that we need to be getting behind, folks. We need to be starting pinching pennies on everything. If we're talking about eliminating the case manager position, why? Because it hasn't been filled. If we're talking about eliminating the team leader position, why? It hasn't been filled. If we're talking about the youth worker position, why? It hasn't been filled. Folks, you're telling me you have to cut, 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 and then you're throwing in back six hundred thousand dollars in spending on a whim? Why? Because you want to score political points? That's baloney. Vote for the budget that's in front of you that we, we've been working through for hours. That's what I submit.
Let me speak to this. Let me speak to this. This is my motion, this is now the main motion? Let me speak to this?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, so I'm gonna go down the list here and let's talk about this. Um, so first, the judicial administration is really, um, that's, that's not a big, big lift. It's about fifty thousand dollars total city cost of that, roughly. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Steph. We gotta do everything we do to take care of our judges and our Commonwealth attorney and our sheriff's office. There's a lot of departments that get looped up in that, and they usually always get left behind. We finally, two years ago, made investments in the sheriff's office and the Commonwealth attorney's office that never occurred previously by prior councils. I think we need to keep that commitment that we made two years ago. When we look at the, um, um... When we look at the, the fire, right? So it's a administrative position, but it's also an emergency management position. That's critically important. Critically important. And one big item in here that's been eliminated from the fire department budget, I know Mr. Faraldi is trying to say this is fancy T-shirts, but a hundred thousand dollars for a grant match for capital equipment? Um, Ms. Witt, isn't that how we get things like cardiac monitors and, um, things like that when we're matching? You know, we have grant funds to match grants for...
It's any grant that the fire department applies for that there's a local match. They, they fund it out of their budget with the, those funds.
So that hundred thousand dollars could be five percent towards a fifty thousand dollar cardiac monitor. It could be various things. And, and it goes a long way when we take little chunks at a time to buy important equipment, the kind of equipment that you need to have available when your life is on the line, or your family member's life is on the line. We're talking about automatic chest compression devices. We're talking about defibrillators. We're talking about stretchers. We're talking about auto-load systems, right? You know, that's what that's for. It's a hundred thousand dollars to match towards grants to buy sometimes a million dollars worth of equipment. Third-party assistance with the promotional process. Not gonna say anything, but I'm sure you could probably get a smirk out of some of the folks in the room here that have been promoted, and they know it's probably better when you got neutral outside people involved in public safety promotional processes. That's always a plus. Um, it really does make a difference and help get us the best and brightest moving forward. So, let's see, what's the next page here on... Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna make a request that we prepare for the next meeting and censure and fine for Mr. Faraldi if he keeps this up.
No, no.
Do it.
Publicly.
No censure, it's good.
Next thing, going down the list. Police department, eliminate positions from the police department. Eliminate contract for third-party assistance promotional processes, that's in there. Eliminate FY twenty-six increase for contract for third-party assistance with promotional process. So I guess that's two different pieces there. Eliminate public safety systems analyst one position. Reduce miscellaneous contractual services, not sure what that is, forty-one thousand dollars. Um, reduce forms and stationery, that's a small amount. Reduce office supplies, that's a small amount. So when I look at this, though, one of the things that we've gotta do is we've gotta complete this new police department headquarters we're getting ready to have the grand opening in. I'm sure there's probably some things in here that are a part of incorporating into that new police department headquarters. Is that right, Ms. Witt?
Um, in the, there are no cuts to, um, just what's listed here, these few things in operations for the police department. The three hundred thousand dollars for the electricity for the year, the additional electricity for that building is in the proposed budget.
Okay. So, but that public safety systems analyst one position, is that something that would probably go along with our new real-time crime center that's going into our new police department headquarters? Does that sound right? Something...
I, I mean, it, it's not earmarked for that use. It's the, uh, I think they have thirteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen IT folks in, in LPD, and this would be eliminating one of the...
Analysts.
One of the vacancies there.
And, and, and we've got a brand-new real-time crime center coming online in our new police department headquarters? Not the time to cut back on, on that. Um, sheriff's office, um, seven hundred and fifty bucks for fringe benefits associated with part-time admin funds. I think we're okay with that. Um, eliminating part-time administration funds, ten thousand dollars. I know a lot of the guys that work part-time for the sheriff's office, and let me tell you what, they are force multipliers to help protect our courts. They're some great guys. A lot of them are retired police officers, some of them are actually retired firefighters. They're good folks. Um, we need to support those guys and continue. Uh, protect apparel and protective wear. You know, somebody that's actually never had a real operational job in their life wouldn't understand that the apparel and protective wear in your uniforms, right? It gets torn up and it's gotta be replaced. If there's not enough money for it to be replaced, then we're gonna have our folks walking around with holes in their knees and holes in their armpits and all that stuff. So we don't want to have that look in our city. And then law enforcement supplies. We've also got a little production of law enforcement supplies in here. So, you know... supplies in here. So, you know, I am inclined to say we need to fully fund our public safety system and fully fund our criminal justice system, and that's what my motion does. I hope you support it. I do not want to vote against our police officers and our firefighters and our EMS providers and our dispatchers and our sheriffs, Commonwealth attorneys, judges, clerk, all of those folks. They're very critically important to keeping our city safe, and I will not be supporting anything that does not fully fund our public safety and criminal justice system. So I hope you support this motion.
Mr. Wilder? I do not support it, because I do not support our police and all of the other items there, but we were reducing some items, reducing the budget. So in order to make everything work, we cut a little bit here, a little bit there. I don't agree with closing the Templeton Center, you know, but we're cutting a little bit here and a little bit there. So that's why I do not support this new motion, because now it's an additional half a million dollars, six hundred thousand dollars, whatever, that we gotta figure out at some point where to pull that from. So I do not support this new motion. Thank you.
And we did talk about this upstairs, and we added things back in, and Ms. Witt said what was added back in. We added for fire, we added back in the tools, equipment, contractual services, the PPE, the training equipment and props. We added back in for police, the investigation services, the law enforcement supplies, the apparel, the protective wear and apparel. We added back in, yeah, pulse points. Yes, I understand that, but we, we marked it off, and then that's what they revised and added back in. So I'm just saying, we, we've added that, what we, what we decided upstairs was the most essential things out of these lists when we were talking about making these adjustments. And then you then said you weren't gonna vote for anything anyway. So it's not that...
Not what I said.
It's not that we're saying it's not all important, but we're, again, having to go through and say what is the most important things or what are the most important things of these different areas. And so we, we did talk about adding the, the things back in. So, I mean, if we're gonna have to look at now making an adjustment again after we gave instruction to the staff to bring us back what we agreed to upstairs, and they did that, and now we're amending it again and asking for an additional six hundred thousand dollars at eleven oh six at night, I mean, we should have done that at the work session.
Mayor, can we...
Yes.
Can we vote? I'm voting no. Can we vote? And just, we need to pass a budget.
Let's, let's vote.
All right, initiating vote now. The motion passes four, three.
Mayor?
Listen.
I'm gonna ask you where you're gonna come up with six hundred thousand dollars to fix that delta now.
Move on to the next.
No, Mayor, I need to know. Where are you gonna come up with the delta to fix that six hundred thousand dollar hole? No, I can't move on to the next one without knowing the financial situation. We've just put ourselves in. No, neither do you. I'm asking, Mayor, where are we gonna find that delta you just made?
When I passed the eighty-four cent tax rate, eighty-four cent on a hundred...
Mayor, I won't vote for an eighty-cent tax rate. I won't vote for an eighty-four cent real estate rate. I'm voting no on that. So where are you making up the delta? It's three, three dollars on the card. That's it. So I need to find out six hundred thousand dollars to make this work now. Thank you. Mayor?
You want to move on?
I move adoption of the, forgive me.
This has changed. Do you mind if I read the language?
Please.
This will be consideration of introducing an ordinance appropriating the FY twenty-two-six discretionary external service provider budget. This is only one ordinance now for impact living services. If that's, if that's correct.
Speak to your second.
Speak to my first.
Let's speak to you first.
This is a great investment that we make, that these, these folks really do a lot of help with trying to kinda keep the mental health right for our first responders. And the funds that we contribute to them is a force multiplier. They've been doing amazing things to, to really keep our folks as mentally prepared as they can be, and, and they're there when times are tough. So it's important to take care of our first responders in that way.
Okay, I'll speak my second.
Anybody else?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's a great thing for us to fund, and I know it provides a lot of much-needed support, so happy to support.
Anyone else? Let's vote.
All right. Initiating the vote now. Okay, good. The motion passes seven, zero.
So moved, Mayor.
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Anything?
That does not include the schools operating, correct?
Correct.
Because it shows it on here. It shows component units Lynchburg City Schools local operating on here. Is that just for showing it as a balancing purpose, but it's not...
Just the local operating. It's not the entire city's budget, which will be appropriated by council by category in the separate ordinance.
Councilman, I'm following the agenda for what it's worth, not necessarily the packet on that front.
Okay. I'm just going page by page on the packet. All right.
Mayor, can we vote? I'm so sorry. Who made and seconded that motion? Made it and seconded? Thank you.
I don't think, I don't know if there was a...
There was a second.
And I seconded it.
All right.
We vote on the operating budget.
Yes.
Let's have a vote.
All right, initiating now. The motion passes four, three.
Mayor? Alicia, which were we at? I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm sorry, one second. Let me just record this.
D.
Yes, we'd be on D now.
Is that where we're at?
This is consideration of introducing an ordinance appropriating FY twenty-two-six operating. This is...
Skip the discretionary external services.
You did, you did the impact living services.
Yeah, so this is, so this is, is this the fleet services?
So moved, Mayor. This is...
Fleet, airport, water, sewer, stormwater, city, federal, state aid, community development block grant, Children's Services Act, home investment trust fund, Lynchburg Expressway, regional detention home, risk management, special welfare fund, and the technology fund.
So moved, Mayor.
Which one?
All, all of them.
Second.
Traditionally, we do them in block.
And we have a vote, please. End of discussion.
Discussion?
Vote.
All right, initiating the vote now. Motion passes seven, zero. All right, now we're on to E. If you're following along with your agenda, this is consideration of introducing an ordinance appropriating the FY twenty-two-six schools operating budget by major classification. Councilor Missions, I am in receipt of your disclosure, saying that you're a member of a group. That group being spouses, employees, of teachers employed by industry schools.
Mayor, thank you. So, so moved.
Second. Let's vote on schools.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we fund the school division at the operating request from the school division at one hundred and nineteen million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, according with the agency-submitted FY twenty-two-six line. Fully fund the school's request.
Second.
What's been changed?
Let's vote.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a minute.
What's been changed? Nothing has been changed from...
This is what the schools, what the schools asked for, what the schools said they needed.
After the manager's proposal, the school's school board adopted an updated...
Westen, five point five million additional in funds from the city, and what was proposed was two point seven million. So are you going to the five point five million?
Substitute motion for the one hundred and nineteen million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollar request.
I believe that includes additional state revenue.
We have new revenues from schools.
It's a nine hundred thousand dollar delta here.
Mayor, may I make a point of order? I moved for the adoption of all this by major classification. As the motion stands right now, as it is a substitute, it would be for one check, period. And that is different in nature of what my intent was, and therefore should not be a proper motion before council.
No. Let me, let me restate, let me, let me clarify. I think I can clarify and point this out. I'm talking about all the line items, just as you discussed, by category, but the column that I'm looking at in our FY twenty-two-six budget, where there's about a, it's nine thirteen minus eighty-four, there's about a sixty million dollar, or excuse me, six, there's about an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar delta here between what's in the FY twenty-two-six budget and what's on this ordinance. I think the, Mr. Deputy City Manager Patrick is saying that, that this could be additional state revenue. I'm not sure, but I'm not gonna...
It is additional state revenue.
So, so then the ordinance could be wrong and maybe needs to be updated? Is that what that is?
No, the additional, this is based on the governor's...
So why is it less?
Last superintendent's memo to update how much state revenue they were going to receive.
So, so if it's additional state revenue, why are we looking at one hundred and nineteen thousand, nine thirteen, one ninety-nine in here versus one nineteen on the, on the actual proposed, like the binder, right?
The cause, I think the difference is, wait a minute.
If it's additional state revenue, why is it less? That's my question. I want to make sure we don't shortchange the school system. And I got another question while we're here at this. Why is it that we don't give the schools their money until January?
Do what now?
Why, why are, why are we holding back the money from the school division until January?
We don't.
That's not what the school board's telling me today.
I'd have to know what funds you're requesting, because we give them as they need it for payroll.
They're saying that the local operating funds are withheld from the school division until January, and they are only provided when receipts or reimbursables are shown for it. So if that's...
We give them monthly money to make sure payroll's met. It's done on a monthly basis, so I don't know what funds they're talking about.
No, well, you're not gonna have one hundred and nineteen million, but I'm just curious about what the, they asked, so I'm asking. But yeah, I'm looking at a delta here between one nineteen, nine thirteen, one ninety-nine on the total, and we can, we can do the...
They received one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars additional state funds.
So the school's adopted budget, the most recent adopted budget by the school board ties out exactly to the one nineteen, oh eight, four, oh six, eight.
Okay, so... So, but, but this is what I'm getting at right here, is...
So, so here's...
So manager, so did we...
Here's what happened. I can tell you, I'm ninety-nine percent sure. In the school's original proposal, which is what's in the proposed budget, they asked for an additional amount of local funding of about five point four million, okay?
Okay.
What the manager proposed was two point seven million to cover the cost of the salary increases. Since that point in time, the state has given us an additional one point nine million dollars, almost two million dollars in revenue, and the school board has come back and adopted a final budget that includes that extra revenue. They actually reduced their request from the city, but they added the two million dollars in revenue from the state. So that delta of nine hundred thousand is the delta in, between their original request and where, and what they ultimately adopted. Now, the difference is, they're getting two point seven roughly million dollars less from us than they originally requested, but they're getting almost two million dollars more from the state. That's where your delta is. But they have actually come back and adopted this exact amount.
And so what I'm saying is, I want to fully fund their original request.
This is their request. It's what, it's what the school board has adopted.
Agency submitted FY twenty-two-six. There's eight hundred and sixty thousand more. That's my substitute motion. And it looks to me like it's about eight hundred thousand more in instruction.
We've had this for three months. Come on.
Exactly.
No, actually, we didn't get this until today. I got this today, today. So, so that's, so that's, my motion stands to adopt it by category. If I need to go read through them, or can I just reference the page number of the budget for you, Alicia? Is that fine?
That'll be fine.
So it's page one eighty-seven in the budget. It's the agency-submitted column?
So keep in mind, this would require us to find another nine hundred thousand dollars in reductions, and it would provide nine hundred thousand dollars more in funding than the school board has adopted in their most recent budget.
In addition to the six hundred thousand we just did.
Correct. So that would be one point, now we're at one point five million dollars in additional costs. Almost one point six.
And this is the substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Let's vote on the substitute motion.
The motion fails, three, four.
Mayor, I renew my motion to pass what is in front of us for the schools.
Second. Let's vote.
Sorry, one second.
The main motion.
All right, initiating vote now. The motion passes seven, zero.
Mayor?
The next item?
Next item.
Number F, if you're following along on your agenda, it's consideration of introducing an ordinance adopting the FY twenty-two-six, twenty, twenty, twenty thirty capital improvement program appropriating the FY twenty-two-six capital budget.
Mayor?
She was right. Go ahead.
So moved.
Is this as presented in the budget?
No, there's been a couple of changes.
Well, then, we probably need to hear about that, so we know what we're voting on.
Trying. Enterprise Drive Intersection, there's another development coming on Enterprise Drive, and this adds a signal at, what's that word? Duncrake. At Enterprise Drive and Duncrake, that will be partially funded by the developer. No, wait, no, I'm sorry, wrong one. This is local funding of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, consulting engineering... and twenty-six dollars, and consulting engineering is added in twenty-six, which is what you're actually appropriating, and the rest of the project is in twenty-seven. Also added are the Wiggington Road intersection improvements to the tune of two million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. This does have developer contribution of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and it is put in place over twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
So moved.
Does this, does, this includes the pool and the library and all that stuff?
Yes. These are the only changes.
Yeah, second.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion to repair the pool at five hundred thousand and eliminate the library re-imagination.
Second.
What, what you got?
I put pool at one, because there are some...
Other things, okay, so one million on the pools, on the pool.
And I think that we need to address a couple components in the, in the library. Sorry, we're, we're talking about a possible friendly amendment to this as far as some availability in the schools and the pool, to make sure that the basic needs are met, and then we can assess those projects from there. So with the library, there are some plumbing components that I understand can be done at a much more effective rate than what's been represented to us, but I would like there to be a little room in the budget for that plumbing.
Do you have any idea what that would be?
Miss, Mr. Mayor, do you have any ideas of, I, I know Vice Mayor Deemer had mentioned some alternatives in the plumbing approach. I'd just like a little bit of money set aside in order to make sure that we can move forward on making those, those plumbing adjustments. So that's my friendly amendment, that I would offer one million into the pool, so you can address...
So, 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 I mean, could we do a million at the pool, a million at the library, and, and call it for repairs? All right, and then if they need more, they can come back?
How much?
So a million for the pool for, for repairs, and a million for the library for repairs? That's my substitute motion.
Are you good with that friendly amendment, Mr. Deemer?
That's fine.
Can I speak to that, please?
Yes.
I think the people who made the motion and seconded it probably should be...
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I thought you spoke.
I made, no, I made, I was just negotiating the friendly amendment. So, you know, we're doing fourteen million in new spending, right, in this budget right now? And, you know, we got this lecture about debt service being the opportunity to, to impact the operating budget, yet we're looking at twenty-five to thirty million on a re-imagination of the Miller Park Pool and the public library. And quite frankly, I don't think we need to do anything with the library until we get a library board, right? We need to let them make the decisions of what they, what they do with that. And, you know, it's just not necessary. Now's not the time to be spending this kind of money, when our citizens are struggling to pay for groceries and pay for rent and pay for prescription medications, and, and now their real estate taxes are, are gonna be going up. I mean, good gosh, you know, the, the, we're, we're looking at, most folks are gonna get strapped with a six hundred dollar a month increase, excuse me, not six hundred, six hundred dollar a year increase, that's fifty bucks a month. And then, instead of mortgage, they're gonna take a little more off the top of escrow. So tell you what, seventy-five bucks a month for your mortgage payment, going up, with this plan, right where it's at right now. That's what these four on the other side of the dais have done to you. So when you get that shock on your mortgage bill, right, when you get that shock on your mortgage bill, the senior citizens that have come out in droves, right, remember the four people who didn't stop it, 'cause the three of us have been trying to stop this. Fifty to seventy-five bucks a month going up on your mortgage bills, not right. We, we can't be doing luxurious, exorbitant capital projects on the backs of our taxpayers. That's my motion.
Speak to me a second. Let's speak to you second.
Yeah, I, I love the library. I've got my library card, and I use it, been using it since I was eight. I constantly never swam in the city pool, and most of the people who were three aren't gonna benefit from this. So I have not heard from one of them who wanted to spend this exorbitant amount on, on a pool that they will never see, so, but they're gonna be paying for it, and I can tell you, they're not happy. I, I want to respect them by voting in a way that doesn't try to meet promises that other people made, that I never made. We've gotta stop making promises to people, especially multi-multi-million dollar promises to people, that we really haven't even talked about with the elected representatives, you know? Here we are, end of June, finally having this discussion on this, and it's a short discussion, it's not a full discussion, it's a last-minute knee-jerk, we're gonna do something here right now that I think people will regret on both sides. But do we really know what we're doing? I don't think so. I think it's some last-minute numbers to try to do something right, to fix it without redoing the whole dag-on thing. If my pool in my backyard was having a few problems leaking, I wouldn't be tearing it out, and I wouldn't be building a new pool. I have a library in my house, I'm not gonna make it bigger, you know? I've been to the library, I've seen what they're doing, it's a, it's a minuscule thing compared to what it used to be, and the books have all disappeared, and it's mostly online, people using computers. So, I mean, thirty people over there, I mean, the Commonwealth Attorney doesn't even have thirty people working for him, and they're protecting us, and the Commonwealth Attorney's office, what are thirty people doing in the library? I went through there, and they all looked really busy, but that's a lot of people. So anyway, I, I just can't do this. You know, you plop it on me, and I'm new, and, and, and I get this big old budget, and tell me you need a pool, and you need a library, and you need all this stuff, I, I can't do it. There it is.
Let's read it.
So we only make promises to multimillionaires to make 'em richer, that's what I just heard, 'cause we're about to spend two point six million dollars of taxpayer money for a developer on a road, but we're only gonna spend two million dollars combined on a library people in a section of our city depend on, and a million dollars on a pool people in a certain section of our city depend on. That's all they're worth. That's what I just heard. Man, we sound so bad, y'all, so bad. And it's just political. All this talk tonight, political, political. And it's so sad. Y'all, I don't care if I run again, don't care if I win, I've learned so much in the two and a half years I've been on this council, and it's that politics sucks. It has brought up the worst of everybody, up here, out there, the worst, and you guys all lose because of it, all of you. And you deserve so much more, and like, these comments are just awful. Yes, should we be, should we be fiscally responsible with your money? A hundred percent, but every single person in this city matters. And if we're gonna say, well, the condition of our schools matter enough, 'cause they're falling apart in certain areas, if we're willing to spend sixty million dollars, but then the library, because we're concerned and offended by certain books that they have, then the condition of that building doesn't matter, and it's only worth really a million dollars. And the condition of the pool is only worth maybe a million dollars, because we think that we are suddenly engineers, and we know better, or suddenly we're librarians, or whatever the case is, and we, and we know more than people who are actually experts in certain fields. And there are at-large representatives up here that need to put politics aside, who've made multiple promises that we're reminded of, but have to consider all the people in the city. And there are a lot of people who care and use our library, and a lot of people that depend on that pool. And what I just heard is just offensive, offensive, when we're about to spend almost three million dollars of taxpayer dollars on a road for a, a developer that's gonna make two hundred and fifty million dollars, and I do not wanna hear about how it was earmarked years ago for the same road, blah, blah, blah. We all know the truth of this whole situation, and I don't wanna hear it again, because that's a whole new development.
We've had plenty to talk, let's vote.
So, so the reality is, I don't support the substitute motion, it's completely offensive. We need to vote on the CIP the way it was presented.
Jackal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things I love about civic government is that typically, by the end of the day, everybody's been offended, but we can deal with it, and we should be able to, to move on from that. The reason that I support this substitute motion has to do with the reasons that I've stated a number of times. Miller Park Pool, I fully support having the pool, having it open, having it available to the public, and then, and I have explored various options and how to expand that availability, whether through a public-private partnership, or looking at other means where it comes to how can we do improvements, rather than a complete tear-down and rebuild. The experts that Ms. Reed referred to, gratefully, I, I got to speak with some experts, I got to speak with a number of pool experts in addition to city staff, and those are the individuals that I relied on for the numbers, because they're the ones who have serviced the pool for over the past decade. So as I am considering this, no, I am, I am not a pool expert, but I have gained sufficient information to credibly believe that we can repair the facility, that we can make improvements upon the facility, and that we can go from there in our decision-making process. And I greatly appreciate Mr. Farrell these comments, when it comes to debt service, we need to drive down our debt service, that is absolutely essential. And I think this is a good place to start, as we assess what are other opportunities for public-private partnerships in these areas, what are other ways that we can expand these services? It's part of why I've talked about the value of the audit committee, not only as an internal audit system, but actually to assess quality improvement opportunities and technology implementations. So, fully support the substitute motion, and fully support the improvements to Wiggington Road. I'm going to have a town hall regarding budget, regarding Miller Park Pool, addressing some of the questions and misinformation that's come up around Wiggington, and the nature of that vote, the nature of the development itself, and, and why I made my decision, so I'd love for anybody to attend that on July first. But, Mr. Mayor, I fully support the substitute motion, and I believe that we can add money to the CIP if other improvements need to be made. We absolutely need to deal with plumbing, we absolutely need to deal with a leak, so let's do it, and let's move forward and figure out where we need to go from there.
It's just not plumbing, all the control joints in the library need to be replaced. Do you know what a control joint is?
I, I'm not familiar with that, Mr. Mayor, but I am familiar with the fact that the things that have been represented to me in one area have been different from the other area. I think we start with what we know, and then we move from there, and we can add additional money to the budget if we need to. I support the library and the library being open, but let's start with, with what we know, and, and move from there, rather than expanding a footprint when we're not even using...
Okay.
The, the current footprint to the most effectiveness, effective way of possible.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Yeah, thank you.
It's getting on twelve o'clock, we need to get done and get out of here.
I've got, I gotta, I gotta re-read and answer a question. If Councilmember Reed will, will respond to the question, I would, well, I'm gonna read it anyway. So, so this is an email from June fourth, twenty twenty-five, and I'm just gonna read a section from the last paragraph. On another note, I have quest, this is, this is to Stephanie Reed, I have questions about the RFP for the EDA, that's Economic Development Authority, land on Wiggington. Are you aware of this process? Can you share any details on the timeline of proposed plans, such as single-family homes with rear-side loaded garages? I may have that detail incorrect. Furthermore, after discussions with the leading regional engineering consulting firm, I have concerns about cost overruns on several capital projects and their associated RFPs. So I've sent multiple emails and asked multiple questions to Councilmember Reed about her involvement with this RFP that was currently out there, and I think it's been awarded for development on Wiggington Road. I'm not sure how many units, is it five hundred units, something in that ballpark?
It has not been awarded. There are still contract negotiations.
But it's still out there.
So we cannot talk about it because it's an EDA project?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so it's, so the RFP had five hundred units, I think initially on it, something in that ballpark?
We, we can't speak to the details.
Well, the RFP's on the city's website, you can find it for yourself.
Okay, fine, let, let...
No, 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 I've asked questions, Councilmember Reed's making accusations against us about the Wiggington Road project, and I have asked multiple times about her involvement with the RFP for this Economic Development Authority project on Wiggington Road that is a massive residential subdivision right next to the Wiggington development that was approved. So that's my question, is I've asked her, she's denied, not answered any of the emails, right? So I'm, I'm reading it out loud right here, if she's gonna make accusations about Wiggington, this, that, and the other, I just wanna ask those questions out in the public, and, and she doesn't have to respond.
Let's vote on the substitute motion.
Yes, sir, initiate the vote now.
The substitute motion, Dr. Wilder, has to do with essentially limiting the pool and the library and the interim, and then going from there. Oh, sorry, here we go, yes.
So, no, no, no.
The motion fails three, four.
Yes.
I renew my motion. One second, a minute.
Let's go.
I would like to suspend our rules of procedure and divide the question and divide out Wiggington Road.
Second.
And, and I'd like to speak to my motion.
Mayor? Point of order, that's not in our rules of procedure.
That's why I made the motion to suspend it.
The motion to suspend, and I seconded the motion to suspend.
Continue your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In voting for Wiggington Road, part of my vote was largely contingent on conversations that I had with all of you prior, that had to do with road improvements and ensuring that that component was met for those citizens. I believe...
May I interject? If you all wanna vote on those separately, let's just vote on it separately. If you wanna vote against it, vote against it. We're gonna vote for the whole thing, let's move on. I, I'm trying to be respectful and just save time.
Not Mayor or not Vice Mayor Farrell, to, to just chill out.
I'll just continue when everyone's done. Ah, thank you, okay, cool. So I'll retain the floor. Thank you for your willingness to divide out the motion. I believe it is very important that we vote for these road improvements, and I will happily, again, speak to the value of this development for our community, the, the concerns that it meets. I'm starting to stumble on my speech, we all are, it's a late hour, so come to the town hall, would love to discuss it, and would love to discuss the nature of this budget process, and how we've gotten to this very late hour today. But thank you, I would like to suspend the rules of procedure and divide the motion. I vote in favor of Wiggington.
Second, so I've seconded that.
Mayor?
If I may, if you would withdraw, I'll make a motion for the capital improvement plan without those two items, vote on it, then if you wanna make, I'll make a motion for the next two, y'all can vote against it, and we move on. There's no need to just, just...
We're already there, we got a motion and a second.
No, I don't feel like voting for all that, but it's, it accomplishes the same thing.
Doesn't matter what you feel like, we got a motion and a second.
And I'm gonna vote no.
It's correct, there's a motion and a second on the floor, as it relates to suspending the rules and dividing the question as Councilmember Timber described.
Let's vote on the motion.
This is, I'm sorry, this is for the Wiggington Road line items?
It's to suspend the rules and then to vote on Wiggington, and then the rules are no longer suspended after the Wiggington vote.
Okay. Initiating vote now. The motion passes four, three.
Okay.
Now we gotta vote on the Wiggington Road.
Wiggington Road project alone.
I'll make that as a motion.
I will second.
Okay, let's vote.
Initiating vote now.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes four, three.
Mayor? I move adoption of the CIP.
Second. Second. Want to speak to it?
Nope.
Let's vote.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to speak to it. I'll be voting against this specifically because of the pool and the library spending. We don't need to be doing, I want this specifically for the minutes, Alicia, we don't need to be doing exorbitant projects on the backs of our citizens. I do fully support the school infrastructure, but I can't get behind this with the library and the pool as is. I wouldn't mind fixing the library and pool, you know, doing what we need to prepare them and keep them serviceable and operational, but I just simply cannot support this capital improvement plan as a whole.
Ms. Timber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, for the record, I fully support the funding to the schools. I do want to keep the pool open and moving forward. I want to keep the library open and moving forward and make the necessary improvements. I have said a number of times what was represented in various capacities has been incongruent, and so I do not feel capable of, I don't, I won't vote in favor of it when I don't have that information.
Discussion over. Vote.
The motion passes four, three. All right, this is letter G on your agenda, consideration introducing an ordinance appropriating 50,000 of the FY 2026 reserved for contingencies for use by the city manager.
Mayor? Motion to deny. Mayor? Motion to deny, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Granting someone the floor to make a motion.
Will you give Christopher Aldy the floor on that?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Second. Second. Let's vote.
Motion passes five, two. All right, letter H, and I believe this one has changed. Let me just see. So consideration of adopting an ordinance setting the personal property tax relief rate at 30...
I believe that's the item that was moved to Monday, correct?
It would be two items, but this item is contingent upon the vote on Monday. This only requires one vote, so I would suggest we
Okay.
we hold this item until we address the property tax rate, at which time we can provide the correct relief percentage.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we adopt the ordinance to continue the one year for the no disposal fees for city trash collection services.
Second, I believe that's item I.
That's I. That's correct.
End of discussion. No? Let's vote.
All right, initiating the vote now. I'm sorry, my computer just timed out.
I'm about to time out.
I'm going to have to reset that. Okay, now I am initiating the vote. Thank you for your patience. Motion passes seven, zero.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt the ordinance to eliminate the motor vehicle license fees for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
End of discussion. Let's vote.
All right, initiating the vote now. Motion passes seven, zero. I believe letter K has been pulled.
And then, and then we've got the reconsideration motion. I'd like to, do we have a closed session item for that?
Mayor?
I would suggest that if you all take up the motion to reconsider, that we do a very brief closed session, very some legal advice I'd like to give.
I would like to do the closed session if you have the item.
Mr. Feraldi? I move that we table the item to reconsider.
We need, I think we need to deal with this tonight. I've got a motion to reconsider on the floor.
Second.
And I have no comments.
No comments, sir.
So, so we're tabling the motion to reconsider based on the new information that was provided to the council. I'm going to offer a substitute motion that we go into closed session and get, do you have the verbiage for it? Can you say the verbiage for me?
I can. It would be a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for purposes of receiving legal advice in connection with a school board appointment. That was done recently.
I would move that we take that legal advice in closed session. I'm going to make that as a motion.
Second. You want to speak to it?
Not going to speak to it. I think we need to go into closed session and discuss it.
Move that we go into closed session.
Mayor, I'll make one comment on the substitute motion.
Yeah.
I appreciate the fact that in this country, we have a judicial system that is honorable and serves justice. Thank you.
So what's, what's on it? What's on the floor?
It's a substitute motion.
Substitute motion to go into closed session to get legal advice from the city attorney.
Let's vote.
Initiating the vote on substitute motion now. Motion passes, and now it's come to the main motion.
All right, I move that we go into closed session.
Motion's not necessary. It's not the main motion.
Mayor?
Listen.
I'm voting no.
Voting no? Voting no as well. No closed session.
Well, I mean, I think we need to get the legal advice, too.
I would like to speak to, I would actually, I would really welcome the city attorney's advice on this one. I'm stuttering in the late hour. I still have faith in our ability to have this discussion and get it done tonight. I don't think it'll take long, and I think it would be...
It's prudent.
It would be prudent, but also respectful to the nature of our appointees.
Correct.
So I'm voting in favor that we have this discussion now.
Move to go into closed session.
We got to have a vote. Got to call a vote.
Is she ready?
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and initiate the vote. To go into closed session.
Yeah, to certify, and then to take a motion. Yeah. It'll take a while. I'll text you. I bet. It's like a long... Okay. Yeah, keep it here.
The motion passes four, three. We're now in closed session.
...